Time. Do this thousand times. So it's going, there we go. Fantastic. Oh, no, keep going. There we go. Let me turn on. I'll let you turn on your mic. Make sure, okay.
Okay, Mayor, we are live.
Okay. All right, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council Conference, a special time of 5:00 PM, because we are going to be continuing our discussion regarding a possible general obligation bond election for Norman Forward Projects, municipal facility projects, and an economic stimulus package for small business. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Cotton from ADG.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, council members. It feels a little bit odd presenting this way. I will tell you, this is the first presentation I have given virtually since this whole thing started, so hopefully it goes off without a hitch. It, I am happy I don't have to wear a tie. I asked staff if I had to wear a tie in my own home, and they said no, so that made me happy. So, so that part of it's great. I love that. But, so, as Mayor said, so this presentation this evening is really kind of the fourth installment to a conversation that we actually started in February. So if you're like me, you've slept since then, and you know, there's obviously been one or two things going on in everyone's life since then. So I think the thing that I would drive home today, just kind of some opening thoughts, is that, you know, the timing of COVID-19 is obviously unfortunate. We were in the middle of what was in fact, a very important conversation, I think, for the city of Norman, for the entire Norman community. And so, while I don't want to speak for staff, you know, from our perspective, it is a bit discouraging in some ways, you know, I don't really, as we were kind of ending the conversation, I'm not sure that I could say that we were necessarily at a consensus, but it very, to us, it very much felt like we were having the right conversations, the right questions were getting asked, and we were going to move forward one way or the other. And so I would say that COVID-19 has obviously inserted itself into the middle of that, as it has a lot of different things in everyone's lives. And so I think what I would offer is that there will be another chapter after the dust from COVID-19 settles. And so it'll be critically important, I think, for the city, City Norman, to prepare itself for the community and the community for what comes next. And so a lot of the conversations we've been having internally with staff is that the projects that we're going to be discussing this evening could potentially be an important component of this next chapter. And so it's kind of with that sentiment that we're presenting this information this evening, I know that it's sometimes hard to focus on anything but COVID-19. I know for me and my family in our home, it's, it's difficult. But I do think in this situation, it's important that we look past the pandemic to the degree possible and kind of, and think about the role that these projects could potentially play in pulling community back together and giving it an opportunity to reinvest itself and move on. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to switch to the sharing my screen, and we'll start running through the presentation, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So hopefully that's coming up okay for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so, so as I said, this is actually the four, part four of a very long conversation that we've had. So I've got just a few slides with me. I'm not going to cover these in a lot of detail, but I, it, I know as we did session two, that we kind of did a recap of session one, and so it felt appropriate tonight to do the same thing for this session. And so if you remember session one, we basically gave an update to council on the funding analysis. And we talked a little bit about the juncture that we found ourselves in and trying to decide what the appropriate scope was for the projects. We talked at a high level about project grouping. So we kind of had this bucket of Norman Ford projects, and then a, and then a bu, another bucket of projects that we actually discussed in the second session. But in that first session, we, we went back, we provided you a little bit of context on each project. We went through a funding analysis on each project, which basically identified what the current funding was, what the current estimates for the each project was, and then what the gap was. And so then we kind of wrapped that up at the end of the first session with the kind of an aggregate analysis that basically took all of the Norman Ford projects together and identified what the deficit for that bucket of projects was. So that was kind of the first session. The second session, we did, we had a very similar approach, but it was for a second group of projects. And so we had titled those the municipal services projects, because they primarily dealt with services that the city's providing the community. And so again, we provided context, we did a by-project funding analysis. We discussed, the second session, we discussed some options in terms of how that gap might be financed. Anthony and the finance director and the city attorney kind of weighed in on some considerations that needed to be thought about, some possible financial solutions. We talked a little bit about schedule, if you'll remember at the end of session two. And so that's kind of where we stopped in March, or the first week of March. We kind of ended that second session with, again, kind of an analogous slide from the first session, which kind of identified the budget, the gap in each one of the municipal service projects. And then to kind of bring it all home, we kind of put that together with where we ended up in the first session to kind of give you a composite picture, kind of an all-in number for all of the projects that we had discussed over those two sessions. And so this slide probably looks familiar to you, or hopefully looks familiar to you. The third session happened on the 10th, and I've gone back. ADG was in large part a, an audience member for that session. And so a lot of, if you'll recall, a lot of the third session focused on responses to council questions. The city attorney got up and talked a little bit about geo-bond requirements. The finance director talked about some potential funding sources, various financial options. The parks director, Judd, got up, he gave some additional project details for all the Norman Ford projects. There was some staff recommendations that were brought forward. And then again, a kind of this discussion of anticipated schedule. And so in a nutshell, at a high level, that's really what the three different conversations that we've had to this point have included. And so that kind of brings us to tonight. And so obviously tonight, I think what's important, you know, obviously, we're going to continue this conversation that we stopped on the 10th. It seems like a lifetime ago, but it's actually just a little over a month ago now. So we're going to continue that conversation. If you'll remember, as we discussed schedule in the second and third session, there was this conversation going on, going on about, is it a June election? And could it be an August election? This, the schedule for a June election has come and gone, and so that is no longer on the table. And so what I would offer is that the presentation that we're, we brought with us this evening, it is get, we're giving it within the context of an August 2020 bond election. And so I think in large part, as you'll see, as we go through project by project, you know, our thought is we're sitting here, the, the second week of April. If in fact, we move forward with an August 2020 bond election, there's basically four months between now and then. And so the question largely becomes how to maintain momentum on these projects, all of the projects. And so that's a large part of our conversation this evening. And so in that vein, we will basically go through each project as quickly as we can. We'll give you a quick update on the current status of each project. Again, my intention is not to repeat a bunch of information that we've, that we've previously discussed. Otherwise, we'd be here for a really long time. And I know no one has that kind of time this evening. So we'll just update you on the current status. We'll talk about steps that we could potentially take to maintain momentum on those projects. And then we'll talk about some additional things that are considerations that you might want to think about as you're contemplating how the city might move forward over the next couple of months. So we'll do that on a by-project basis. I believe Anthony and Catherine, the city attorney, they're going to get up and say a few things regarding financial aspects and some of the legal portions of a bond election. And so we'll also, again, tonight, talk about potential schedule. I think the sca, the scheduled discussion will be more related to an August election and not, not the June, obviously, anymore. And then ultimately, we'll just kind of wrap it up. I mean, the goal in the conversation this evening is we need some guidance from council on how how council would like us to proceed, or how they'd like staff to proceed. So, so I'm going to start with the first bucket of projects, the Norman Ford projects. These were the seven projects that we discussed during the first session. And so I'm, just for brevity's sake, I'm just going to dive right in here to the very first project. So the first project, indoor aquatic and multi-sport. So the current status is, I think we've reported on this previously, conceptual design has been submitted on that project, and the A and E team is currently awaiting direction. And so as I already mentioned, a lot of the conversation on, on these projects this evening is going to focus on maintaining momentum. And so the bar chart obviously is going to look familiar to you, but really what the momentum is trying to address, most of the projects are in design right now. And so maintaining momentum in large part means maintaining the design process. And so as you look at that bar chart, the $22.5 million is, one way to think of this is that we've identified there in that bar chart, an expanded project scope. And we've already discussed this at some length. The problem that we have is that our A and E teams, they need direction on how to proceed. And so this expanded project scope creates issues for most of our A and E teams. And so in terms of maintaining momentum, a lot of what we're talking about is whether or not to amend the A and E consultant's contract to acknowledge the expanded scope of the project. And so it's that gap that we're talking about. And so I'm going to explain this in a little bit more, just because it's the first project. But in terms of maintaining momentum, and within the context of an August 2020 election, we would essentially need to amend the A and E team's contract for the indoor aquatic and multi-sport facility and to allow that project to continue to move forward. And so for the purposes of the presentation this evening, we've assumed a May 2020 amendment date, and that would allow them to continue on down the road. We've had some verbal conversations with the, with the A and E team for this project. They've indicated that the city might expect an amendment on the order of $250,000 approximately. And that would allow them to move to the next phase of design, which would be schematic design. It would take them essentially 90 days to get through that process. And so you'll see this, this phrase pencils down on each one of the projects or most of the projects. And so what we're really trying to capture there is, how long can the design team work until they have to stop and wait on the results of the bond election? And so for this project in particular, it's going to take that team about 90 days to get through that process. And so coincidentally, their pencils down date, if we were to move forward with a May amendment, would coincide with an August election in general. And so basically, what we're saying is that project with an amendment to the A and E contract, that project could continue to move forward until the August election. So after, if, if in fact, we go to an August election, if in fact, the election is successful, there would then need to be an additional amendment to that A and E contract to allow them to complete the rest of the design for the larger project. And so this doesn't get us all the way to the finish line, but allows us to continue to move forward between now and August. And so I just want to make that clear. For this project in particular, again, as I mentioned previously, we're going to talk on each project and some considerations. For this project in particular, we think the key takeaways or key considerations. The A and E team feels like they understand this project well enough that they can move forward without any additional direction from the ad hoc committee. And so that's obviously good news and would allow that project to keep its momentum. But they do need guidance on their project budget. And so as of today, they are scoped for 22, a $22.5 million facility. And they basically need to know which way to move. And so that's kind of where we're at for this project. For the Senior Wellness Center, very similar. I'm not going to go through each one of these items in quite as much detail. So for that, for that design team, they've, they've estimated $80,000 to $90,000 to move forward into a finished schematic design. They've estimated, they think that's a 60-day duration to get to the end. So they would basically be pencils down in July of this year, so about a month before the election. Again, there would be an additional amendment to the A and E contract required after the election. They don't, again, they don't feel they need any additional guidance from the ad hoc committee. They do need guidance on the project budget, just like indoor aquatic and multi-sport. The, the one thing I would, I'd tell you on Senior Wellness Center, and this is a little bit obvious, but I'm just going to reiterate it here. There's obviously a lot of conversation going on as it relates to the Porter Campus, Norman Regional Health Systems. And so the problem and the challenge with that is if we amend the contract in May, we ask that team to move forward, it may be that we don't have enough information for them to move forward with the site-related component of their design. And so depending on how long that negotiation might take for land sale at the Porter Campus, it may have an impact on the site-related design of the schematic design package. And so we would offer that up here. I would also offer up, you know, there's a lot of discussion that we've had internally over the past week about how the Porter Campus land sale, how it impacts this budget and what the gap is. Obviously, as I said before, COVID-19 is, I mean, and it goes without saying, it's affected everybody. And in particular, I think the parts of our community that deal with healthcare. And so Norman Region is obviously a very central part of that. And so really, we have no idea what the impacts from that will be on them and their ability to get through this land sale process as was previously envisioned. And so I would just offer that up as we need to be a little bit conservative in our minds as we think about the Senior Wellness Center and how to move it forward. The softball and football complex, the conceptual design has been submitted to A and E is waiting direction. Again, we're assuming a May amendment in order to maintain momentum on this project. They've, the design team's estimated verbally that they think that they can get through a schematic design package of the larger scope in about 30 days. And so they would be pencils down in about June, waiting for the outcome of an August election. Again, that additional amendment would be required after the August election. They don't feel they need any additional direction from ad hoc, and so that team's ready to move forward. There are some other considerations here. We talked about these in session one, and so I would repeat them here. If you'll remember, the in-budget facility is woefully undersized. And so that's obviously a challenge in terms of letting them move forward with the scope as it's currently, or the budget as we currently have it today. There's also this conversation of the implications of the softball and football facility on the other park projects on the east side of town. And so if you remember from session one, we had this conversation about softball, football has to happen so that softball programs that are at Reeves Park can move, and the programs at Reeves Park can move so that the soccer program or the, the youth baseball programs in Griffin Park can move. And so there's this domino effect going on with all three of these park projects. And so softball, football is right at the, at the bottom of that. And and so that's something important to consider, I think, as we think about softball and football and how or when it might move forward. Ruby Grant Park. And so for this one, this one is a little bit different. It's, and you might remember from our previous presentations, it's currently in construction right now. We anticipate that they'll be complete with construction in November of this year. And so we really don't see any reason to, this project has momentum on its own right now, just because of the way that it came to be. And so for this one in particular, it feels like we could potentially wait to amend the A and E's contract until after the outcome of an August election. And so they feel like, based on our conversations with the A and E team, they feel like they can get through the supplemental drawings that would be required in about two to three months, relatively minor cost. If you remember from session one, you might recognize this depiction here, the, the items in red, the, the items that got VE'd out of the project are removed from the scope of the project. And so obviously, because they've already been designed, it makes this go a little bit faster. But the hope would be that, I think, for this project in particular, if we can move forward to an August 2020 election, the thinking about it within the context of where we are at in construction, the construction manager will still be out there working. And so we could potentially change order, any additional improvements that we make, it would be granted into their contract as long as it's done prior to November. And so that's something to think about as it relates to Ruby Grant, that I think is really important, something that we want to think about in terms of timing. So so for Griffin Park, reduced scope is currently in construction. We've got folks out there working on some of the fields. Right now, we anticipate that that work is going to be completed in December of '22. So for this one in particular, I'm going to flip past this just a little bit. So if you remember the Griffin Park project in particular, there was a pretty significant increase, and it primarily kind of circled around this indoor soccer facility. And so based on our conversations with that A and E team, they do feel like they need to get, if in fact, we were to ask them to move forward, and you can see the estimated amendment price there, how long it, they anticipate it might take them to get through that process. But they, in talking with that design team, they don't feel like they can start that process until they group back up with the ad hoc. This, this component of the project that was removed initially as a significant enough piece that they don't really feel like they have enough direction on it today to move forward without getting back to the ad hoc. And so I think that's something to think about as it relates to Griffin Park. Reeves Park, if you'll remember, so we've got a reduced scope that's ready to bid. So the CM is essentially needing guidance on how to proceed. And so if you remember from session one, we had this conversation about the way that it's currently scoped. So the depiction that you see there on the right side of the slide, those are, the red fields are fields that are essentially being renovated. And so with the additional scope, we were actually going to construct new fields essentially. And so that's obviously a pretty significant change for that team. What we don't want is to have this construction manager go ahead and bid the project, start down that road, and then find out we've got additional funds, and we want to change the, the rules of the game on them. So that's something to think about. We could obviously allow this project to maintain some momentum and move forward by amending the existing A and E's contract. Again, we could do that in May, allow them to move forward through schematic design. They, according to our conversations with that team, they anticipate it might be 60 days to get through that process. And so they would essentially be pencils down in July of this summer. Again, an additional amendment that would be required, that's appearing on almost every slide. So I'm not, I'm not going to speak to it every time. But they do feel like they don't, that they do feel like they do not need any additional information from the ad hoc committee. So that's good news on that one. For the park maintenance facility, if you remember, this facility is going to be co-located, kind of as envisioned, it's co-located with fleet and fire maintenance. So the, the site plan that you see there. There has been some adjustments as it relates to this project. And so I'm trying not to get too much into the weeds on this, but there's a $5.1 million federal grant that's been secured by the city. And so that will come up again later. But because of that, we anticipate that the, the fire and fleet maintenance facility, I, the last time we had this conversation, we thought all of these projects were going to move forward at the same pace. But with the addition of that grant, we feel like fleet and fire maintenance may potentially move forward a little quicker. And so because of that, we've had to move some things around inside of the project scope. And so the exit, the, the chart that you see on this slide is reflecting that. And so the scope of the park and maintenance facility has actually gone down a little bit. And so you can see the $4.8 million that we're reflecting here is actually reducing our gap somewhat from what we had previously. So now we're down to about $2.8 million. And so that, that will come up again later. I just wanted to describe that for you a little bit. In terms of maintaining momentum for this project, there is an amendment, I believe, on council agenda for this evening, and to amend the A and E team's contract to expand the scope for these projects. And so that will happen tonight. And so that's good news for this project. Regardless of the August election, this, you know, this team can move forward in some fashion. So they currently, we currently believe that they're going to be completing that design around June of this year. And I believe that what they're targeting is substantial completion at the end of the year. And Sean or Judd may speak more to that. If you have specific questions. If you'll remember from our conversation in session one, this facility does have implications on Reese Park. It's right in the middle of one of the kind of four plexes of fields. And so it's got to be dealt with in order to allow Reese Park to move forward. So that kind of brings us to the end of the Norman Forward bucket. I know I'm going through these quick. I'm trying to leave some time for conversation. And so that brings us to the second grouping of projects, the municipal services projects. And you can see the three projects that we discussed in detail during session two. So there was a lot of conversation at the end of session two and during session three about a homeless resource center and what that might look like. And so we've included some additional information in that regard on our presentation this evening. And so we'll step through that a little bit. So for the municipal complex renovations, we currently have an A and E under contract. We anticipate that there, the schematic design package will be complete around the end of this month. So since the last time that we met, session two, we have in fact interviewed construction managers and selected a construction manager. That construction manager is now under contract. And so they're moving forward. That team, the A and E and the construction manager, they're moving forward, if you remember, I mean, just like all the other projects, we talked about kind of the existing scope, the existing funding, and then this larger version of the project. And so municipal complex was no different than that. This team, the A and E team, the construction management team, they're moving forward under the original scope, the $11.2 million that was identified in the 2008 bond issue. And so in our way of thinking, that project will be constructed in phases. And so we, we believe that that, that team can go ahead and continue to move forward as they are today, assuming the $11.2 million scope. If we move to an August election, the election, the municipal complex project is included on that ballot, and the, and the, and the election is successful, that's how we could potentially amend the A and E contract to encompass the larger scope. And so that's kind of what we're describing here in August 2020 amendment. And so they've got, we've got an estimate of design fees, how long we think that might take. And so under considerations, we're just trying to capture a little bit of what I just described, which is we think that project can continue to move forward. If in fact, funding becomes available for an expanded scope, we would address that after the election in our way of thinking today. And so Emergency Operations Center. If you'll recall, we've got essentially final construction documents of the reduced design. And so for this one, staff is essentially waiting on direction on how to bid the project. And so if you remember, we had this exhibit on the right side of the screen might look familiar to you. We had this reduced facility that met the budget requirements, but not necessarily the needs of the community. And so we kind of find ourselves at this critical juncture for this project in particular. For this project, we do believe that amending the A and E contract in May might make sense. It would, you can see the price, just based on some verbal conversations with that team, essentially about 60 days to get through that process, which would put them pencils down in July of this year. We had a conversation last time in session two about this larger facility. And so if you remember, that was about a $14.5 million program. You can see an exhibit there, just to kind of remind you what we were looking at during that part of the conversation. There was a pretty extensive, if you remember, a pretty extensive VE process. This project kind of started out really high and then worked its way back down. And so that VE process, you may recall, lasted almost two years. And so in our way of thinking, releasing this team to move into schematic design might be a really good idea, would allow us to better have more information as it relates to cost estimating and pricing of the project. And really, that's true, I think, of a lot of these projects. It's not something I brought up initially, but you know, we obviously are basing all of these project estimates on the best available information that we have. Allowing any of these projects to move forward just provides us that much better information in order to put, to better understand the projects. And so I would offer that up as you, as you contemplate like how these projects or if these products need to move forward. Better information is almost always helpful, or more information is almost always helpful. So I would offer that up. I have a bullet on here, and I'm probably not the person to speak to it. It's probably the chief or someone of fire and police. You know, with what the community, with what everybody has gone through in the last several weeks, you know, we've had a lot of internal conversations at ADG about what role a facility like this might play in a pandemic response. And so obviously, I think that COVID-19 is on everybody's mind right now. And so I think that that has some bearing on the EOC and how to move forward. So we would offer that up just as a consideration here. And so, so for fire and fleet maintenance, these projects are currently in design development. As I said before, they're co-located with park maintenance. We mentioned this $5.1 million federal grant. And so you can see there, because of that, we've made some adjustments to the chart on, on the right. And so obviously, that increases our current funding. We've also made some scope adjustments, and so that reduces the project budget. So the, so those two things taken together has had a pretty dramatic impact on the gap that we see on this project. And so you can see the bar chart on the right kind of reflects the new gap as we understand it today. As I said previously, there isn't a any amendment on the agenda, I believe, this evening for that team to allow them to move this project forward. This project in particular needs to move forward regardless of the bond election. And so it's really critical. I believe the current schedule has substantial completion at the end of the year. There's all kinds of implications. There's all kinds of implications. The public parks director is better suited to speak to that. But there's a lot of things going on in terms of timing leases with OU and different things that need to be figured out here. So this project is obviously a mission critical thing for the city. And so this is the schedule as we understand it today. So as I said, the project needs to move forward. We, we have had a conversation with staff, I think, as it relates to this project. As this gap continues to decrease, it begins to beg the question as to whether to remove this project in its entirety from the bond election as we've discussed it previously. So I think that's something that, that needs to be discussed or decided on in the near future. Not to say that removing it from the bond election solves all your problems because you've still got to come up with two point. There's still a gap. And so Anthony and, and his staff would be the person to ask as far as how we feel like that gap might be filled. So it's obviously not as bad as it was before, but there is still a little bit of budget issue on this project. So. So the last project, the, the one that we added, again, the homeless resource center. So since the last time that we've met, ADG has spent some time, we've been working with staff on RFP documents. And we've in large part been doing a lot of research. Coincidentally, the city of Oklahoma City is going through a very related and similar process right now. And so in a lot, in large part, the, the time that we've had since the last presentation, we've spent some time researching the work that's going on up there. And so in talking with city of Norman staff, it's become obvious to us that whatever we do as it relates to homeless needs to be a comprehensive overarching program that is not only addressing what many be needs in terms of a homeless, a resource center or a shelter, but also as a relative to affordable housing. And so in that vein, and for the city of Oklahoma City, they're currently going through, and they've got an RFP that went out in April of 2019. And so they've got three essential, essentially housing studies that are in the process of being completed. And so you can see here on the slide, we've kind of given you some bullet points of how that RFP has been put together. And so it's about a $200,000 effort based on the RFP that we read, about a 14 month process. And you can see the three housing studies that they're currently going through. So the one that's probably most critical are the ones that are most critical to us would be the AI, the analysis of impediments to fair housing and also the housing affordability study. And so you can see kind of the estimated times for that RFP as to when those might be completed. So I think it, the goal here is to give you some idea of if the city were to go through a similar process, what that schedule might look like. We've also reviewed in detail a homeless homelessness strategic plan. And so that the city is in the middle of right now. And so that's about a $100,000 effort that they're in the middle of. It's about a 12 month process. And so we brought with us this evening, just a little bit of research that we've done on that. I'm not going to go through every one of these items in detail, but I wanted counsel to see kind of how that strategic plan is structured. And so it's really, it's essentially broken down into three phases. So there is a first phase, it's an assessment of existing conditions. It looks at gap and duplication, identification, social network analysis. You can see the items that are included in that first phase here, a lot of public presentations on the findings. There's kind of a, there's a second phase that works with focus groups, with service providers in the community, evaluating existing data sources, reviewing existing literature and information. And then a third phase, it's basically reporting all of that information out to the community. And so our way of thinking, this might be an approach that, this is the next, this could potentially be how we move this project forward is the next logical step, I guess I would say. In talking with staff, we, the city of Norman does currently have someone under contract for the analysis of impediments to fair housing. The housing study that was included in the city of Oklahoma City, RFP, one of the three. And so there's someone that has started that work already. But obviously if the city of Norman were to follow suit with something similar, we could essentially put together our piece for the remaining work. We believe that that may be two RFPs, two different consulting teams. So we could essentially do that in May of this year. The consultant, the consultant selection process that we'd finish up in June, which would allow us to move into potentially contract negotiations, issuing the notice to proceed in July or August of this year. And so that works well. We think that's about a nine to 12 month process would be our guess. Uh, and so really pencils down, they would be done in about February of 2020, 2021 with the final deliverables from that effort. We do feel like that, as I said, that these RFPs are the next logical step in this conversation. That strategic plan that comes out of that effort really helped guide the city's homelessness response. And the intent is that it will do so, so that that response is thoughtful and deliberate. And so to us, that's a good reason to make this the next step in this, this project. I would remind, I guess, council, and I'm sure everyone is aware of this, but bond proceeds cannot be used to support programs. So one thing, the point here is that it seems likely that the strategic plan may make recommendations for programs. And so if it in fact does that, proceeds from the pawn sale would not, would not be, we would not be able to use those to finance those programs is the takeaway here. I would add that the cost estimate that we currently have, the $5 million that everyone's discussed at this point, it's really right now, it's uninformed by a specific program or a specific cost estimate. And so I would offer that up. I also believe, or ADG also believes that the RFPs that we developed together with city staff, that we could potentially craft those so that, so that one of the things that, one of the final deliverables from that effort, if in fact it shows that a resource center or a day shelter makes sense and is necessary, that that team would provide a program for that facility and potentially even cost estimates. And so that could be one of the final deliverables from that effort. And so what lastly, last bullet point here on this, as we've discussed it with staff, we feel like this work is potentially is most likely in FY21 capital expenditure. And so what we think makes sense is to move in terms of keeping momentum is to move this effort forward so that whenever the new fiscal year starts, we could essentially engage these consultants for this process for the community. So that really kind of concludes, I know I went through a lot of information really fast. That kind of concludes our ADG session of this presentation. Mayor, I do have some follow-up slides. I'm going to kind of turn this over to, to you and the council at this point and, and let you lead this conversation, I think, from here on in, if that's okay.
You have questions? I don't know if you want to do your part first and then come back to questions?
Um, hmm. Let's, let's go ahead and, and take some questions before we. Actually, this will add to the questions. So guys, look them all out there. Let's go ahead and, and talk about the, the bond package for small business recovery. So next slide, please.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Well, I mean, the only thing on here is addition of business recovery package. So we have, there's no doubt that our businesses are, are suffering. Jobs are suffering as well, which leads to our residents suffering. You can argue that Oklahoma cities are hit harder than any other city in our nation because of the way that we are tied to sales tax revenue to support our general funds. And so it's imperative that we look to the future and figure out a way to support our businesses in any way that we can. Obviously, as local governments, we don't handle unemployment. We don't have trillion dollar packages we can hand out, but we were already working on a bond package. So it seemed like a very opportune time to talk about what we can do. And so Oklahoma City already had a pile of money there ready to go. So they were able to kind of pivot and, and shape that into what do they need immediately? Obviously, if we're not having an August election, we really can't do an immediate need, but there are upsides to that. We can see exactly what it's going to come from the federal government. We can see exactly what will come from the state government. This also gives us time to do our research and do a thorough needs assessment of our small businesses. You know, we don't need to assume what they need to get through this tough time or to come back after this time. We can just ask and we have time to do that with an August election. And so I am incredibly hopeful that with the $5 million that we have essentially saved from the federal grants to help us with the transportation facility, we can turn that right around and turn it into our own business recovery package. We can kind of reboot Norman. And so I know it seems crazy to talk about bonds that will add to property taxes, but in my eyes, it's the perfect time to talk about it because what we are doing is investing in our future. And we talked about what life will be like after COVID-19, which there will be a life after COVID-19. And we have an opportunity to go to the voters and ask, you know, here's what we need to move forward with the Norman Forward projects that are both quality of life and can also help with sales tax revenue. We've got these major public safety projects that have to be addressed. We can keep an eye on homeless, which I really hope that that doesn't rise after this experience, but that would be kind of wishful thinking, honestly. So we can, we can plan our attack on how we're going to address that and we can loop in how we're going to support our businesses. You know, I'm, I'm, when we discussed moving it from June to August, that was because we didn't know what was going to happen. But that I think was a blessing in disguise because we have, again, an opportunity to create a well-rounded package to get us through this. And I, I love the concept of rebooting Norman. You know, we're, we're going to unplug it and we're going to plug it back in and, and we're going to see what we can get moving with our city. And this is an exciting time since this was already on track. And I don't see how we can move forward without adding this package. So I'm very excited to work with our businesses to, to support our economy in any way that we can. And I love that we have time to do it right. We don't have to, again, guess what the, we can ask them. And then we can work with our partners through N E D C, through the chamber, through the business districts, everyone, and make sure it's promoted far and wide to make sure we get back on our feet and moving here in Norman after COVID-19. So we don't have a lot of details on that yet. I wanted to chat with all of you. I know we've had a couple emails on it, but not much more than that. But I'm excited for this opportunity and I think it fits well on this package. And I, I look forward to hearing all of your thoughts on, on all of these different projects. And I have questions as well, but we'll let everyone else get those out first. So Brenda, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, we will start with council member Holman.
So it was mentioned several times, change orders that would be needed after an election. Could maybe just go over that and what that means and why. So we have every project, I think, so.
Yeah, so I think the question becomes, I mean, obviously we, we are, I mean, the best case scenario, the preferred way is to allow, you know, invest just enough in these projects to allow them to continue to move forward. And so that's essentially the concept that we presented here in the presentation this evening. And so what we're really doing is trying to amend their contracts just enough so that we can allow the projects to move forward between now and an August election. And so, uh, you know, obviously sitting here today in April, we don't know the outcome of the election. And so we would, I think, be hard pressed to write a contract amendment that compensates a design team for something that we don't have funding for. And so what we're really doing, council member, is taking the amendment that would be required in total and dividing it into two phases. A, a phase that occurs before the election and a phase that would occur after the election. And so that's, I think, the conversation that we were trying to, or the, the information we were trying to explain, I guess, a little bit, or the approach. Does that make sense?
I would, I would also add to that, that, you know, we're not going to make the mistake of, of paying for things that we end up not having the money for. And so I think it's, it's wise to have money at hand before we commit and, and spend more money on these projects. Regardless of how much we need them, we're going to need the voter support. So I, I fully support waiting until we have the, the yes before we move forward with our contracts.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think I would though, was just wondering what the cost of those change orders might be expected? And if we are already budgeting for that cost in what we're asking for was one of my questions, but I haven't do. So the parks maintenance and the fire and fleet needs, I noticed the scope was reduced. So maybe just a little bit more in depth about what was reduced. Is it anything really necessary? My main point is that if we're asking voters for this very large package anyway, I really don't want to leave anything out that is needed. So if anything, if the scope has been reduced because, you know, the thought is maybe we can come up with it later. I'd rather include it if we're asking for this much money in this many projects anyway. So maybe just a little bit more detail about how the scope of those projects has been reduced and why.
Council member, if I can respond and, and the team will help me fill in the blanks. The conversation in the last week and a half related to the transit maintenance facility out at North Base really did change with confirmation that the $5.1 million identified in the federal transportation budget for the city of Norman does cover the lion's share of that project cost. We talked about it for a couple of days in terms of timing and the ability for us to say, we can advance that project starting today. If we do not include it in the geo bond package and wait for August for word, whether we got voter approval or not, we thought it was most prudent since we have a lease that will run out at the end of the calendar year to advance that project with federal dollars that we already know are coming, plus some resources out of our capital budget that would just allow us to go at a much faster pace on that project. Because we really are pushed for time, hopefully, you know, be out to bid early this summer and be driving into the facility on December 31. So love some additional input from the rest of the team on that one.
So the scope being reduced on that project though, are, are you saying that we anticipate needing to come up with additional funding later on? And August would cover the remainder to do them how we need them to be done.
Uh, we were assuming that, that if we just reworked our existing capital budget, that we could come up with those resources to finish the project at its ultimate scope and just be able to move it faster. So put it on a separate track with the federal money and plus some money reworked out of our existing capital budget, we think we'll be just fine on that particular project.
Okay, um, so.
Council member, excuse me, if I could add a little bit to that, maybe clarify a little bit. The scope of the projects isn't changing per se and we're not taking anything out of the design or deciding that we can live with something less. What changed is the cost of the project when this $5.1 million became available. And then the timing of which one got built first, whether it was the fleet facility, I'm sorry, the transit facility or the park facility, whichever one came first was going to have to pay for onsite improvements like detention ponds and, and utilities and things like that. And so all we've done is shift some of those costs from parks over to the other because the transit looks like now it will happen first. But at the end of the day, the projects are still the same as we originally designed them.
Okay, thank you, Judd. I, let's see, I would say on Reeves Park, I would prefer, I think, not to go forward unless we're able to do. I don't want to cut anything out. So I want to make sure everything that everybody wants that was voted on in Norman Forward is what we're going to do. So just want to make sure that we're not moving forward with anything. But I want to make sure all the funding for Reese's Park that it needs is included in the bond. So it's to do everything that we promised we would do. And then in regard to the fleet or the potential of removing it entirely from the bond, the fire and fleet part, given that we do have so many other needs for funding, you know, quarter project is going to need some additional funding. I can be having some discussions about that. 36th Avenue West, not getting the ACOG funding. I mean, many other issues that we've talked about that we need funding for. So I, I'm excited that we've got additional funding from the federal government to help. But seeing that we have so many needs, I, I don't know that I want to cut anything out and try to look for it somewhere else later. If that makes sense. So just going, going back to my point that we're asking for voters for a large package. So just going, going back to my point that we're asking for voters for a large package, a lot of money already, I just want to make sure we're taking care of everything that needs to be taken care of and not leaving, not leaving anything out. I do look forward to having some more information about how the operations of a homeless resource center would be paid for if the city or how many, what groups would be involved in that, who actually would run it. This was one of the things that was really going to push me towards supporting it an August election over a June one, because I felt like an August election would give us more time to have more detailed information about the study, exactly what it would be, who would be conducting it perhaps? And other information that we could take before we ask voters to approve it. So I am interested in the details on that. It is a project that's sport, do you want some more information? And I think that is the, as far as the business recovery bond, a new concept to me, but very interested in it, of course. A lot of small businesses in Norman, locally owned businesses. And as Mayor mentioned, being the only state in the country that cities are restricted, I guess you could say, by state law to surviving off sales tax revenue. I think it's definitely valid to say that we could be impacted more or see a bigger impact in that regard economically than most other cities and other states. Since we're so reliant on people going out and shopping and eating at restaurants and things like that. So I am interested in what a business recovery package looks like and how that, what eligibility would be and who all is interested in that from our different business districts and things like that. So that's all the questions I think I have at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to Councilmember Wilson.
Hey, y'all. So lots of questions. My first one would be, would these items be multiple different items on a ballot?
You mean multiple questions?
Multiple questions, I meant, yeah.
Catherine, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, thank you. Yes, when we talked about this before, of course, the Norman Forward Projects and the homeless initiative was included in one question. And the other question, question was more having to do with municipal projects, but the, you know, transit facility, the EOC, those kind of things. This, the Business Recovery Program would be a third question. It would be called under a different section of the Constitution. It's the same section that we called our Stormwater Bond question under. And you guys might recall that it's really broad in terms of what you can do for economic development and community development purposes. So we would be specifically defining that based on some of this needs assessment information we get back and where we, where you all see the gaps are between the federal and state programs and what we can provide our small businesses. And so that would be a third question that would stand on its own.
Okay, thanks, Catherine. And on that note, in that Business Recovery Package, I feel like in our study session about the budget recently, we talked about a rent stabilization that was, I know it's probably completely different, but is it, I guess? Anthony, maybe?
Rent stabilization?
I feel like I may have missed some part of that, but I feel like in our budget, we talked about some.
We talked about, in our, in our budget study session, we talked about council's desire to have some sort of resolution, asking landlords to not evict tenants during the COVID crisis, but I do not recall any sort of rent assistance. Now, if council wanted to include that in some sort of a, a small business assistance package, it could possibly be done under that third proposition, but I don't think that was discussed at the budget meeting.
I think what she might be referring to.
Was a CDBG grant, yeah.
Was, yes, the CDBG amendment.
Yeah, so I would be interested in, because I know that there's, I'm getting pushback, of course, for wanting to stabilize renters and not really providing any stabilization to landlords. So I think that actually would be something that could go into the business recovery portion of this because they're a business too, and they're one of those weird businesses that just kind of gets shuffled. So I'd like to just add that two cents to that. And I would also like to add my two cents, and I know we can talk about this further, but these should be grants. But I think there could be a loan portion of it where, I don't know if cities are allowed to do that? Loan money at a low interest rate?
You can under this particular section of the Constitution and under the statutes that sort of flesh that out. You can do low interest loans, you can do incentives, you can do all kinds of things in the vein of economic development.
So Catherine, if we did loans, if we pulled out some portion of that to do loans, could that be an ongoing fund? That could last well beyond?
Revolving loan fund could give life for generations to come. And when you talk about low interest rates, we were looking at some market geobond sales today. And they're able to secure funding at about 1.7% interest. So it just doesn't get better than this particular environment to establish it because, you know, the cost of money is so affordable right now.
Right.
Don't put my feet to the fire on that.
Anthony's not guaranteeing.
Not guaranteed. Nothing's guaranteed right now, y'all. I promise you that. Okay, I have a couple, one more question, I believe. And this may be, I wasn't paying attention at some point, but the city complex, I feel like that original bond, there were some questions as to whether or not we could use it. Has that all been resolved?
Yes, we, we had a declaratory judgment ruling in our favor. The parties filed a joint motion for summary judgment and the judge granted that. So that means we can use the full $8.2 million for this project in recognition that we've provided other funding and another site for the senior center. That's not part of this campus.
Okay.
They give him 11.2, Catherine.
What did I say? Oh, yeah, 11.2, sorry.
Two, yeah, just a few million. One more question. I mean, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. In the, there was a comment about the EOC being a, have some future thoughts towards a pandemic response. I, I am ignorant to what that might look like. Can somebody elaborate?
I think he was getting at any type of an event like this, on a pandemic, we open an EOC and we run those meetings every other day. We run incident command every day. And it's just like we do like on a tornado or other events that you're more familiar with. We run an emergency operations center. And this is a location that it can run from and run a lot smoother than from makeshift facilities or the back of a car or whatever in the field.
So Chief, does that mean there's additional things that need to be put in the building to be? Like there's a dollar amount or a thing we need to add to accommodate that? Or that we're just saying that that's a benefit of getting this up to a fully functioning facility?
That's a benefit and just some options you can have within your emergency operations center to make it operate a little smoother, particularly in remote meetings like this would be a plus.
Okay, that's all I have for now. I'll pass it on to somebody else. Thank you.
Oops, one moment. We will move now to Councilmember Biermann.
I'm muting happy. So a couple of my questions had been, had been asked and answered. But I do have a couple of questions. I think I'm going to kind of go from top to bottom and kind of go back to my first question, which will have to do with the Norman Forward Projects and the municipal bond. Have we, this might be for Judd, have we made any headway on, or additional headway on any operating agreements with the potential operators of these facilities?
No, not, not since we last talked. We have received RFPs from people interested in the senior facility. And we have drafted a request for proposals for the aquatics and multi-sport facility. But those are all just on hold now.
Okay. In kind of your discussions or your talks about, about these operating agreements, what happens if any of these facilities can't reach the break even point on any given year? Who picks up that deficit cost? So let's say they haven't, they haven't found enough tournaments to come in to pay all the bills on the facility. Who picks up that cost?
Well, it would be, I would have to answer by saying it would depend on how the operating agreement is structured, but or to create the revenue that whatever revenue they projected to cover whatever costs they have agreed to cover. That's a pretty poor answer to your question, but whatever.
No, I, I like that. I mean, I just, I want us to start thinking about it now because we are talking about building facilities where large groups of people are going to be gathering. And we're not looking at a 12-month, oh, we're all in the clear and now coronavirus was just a bad nightmare scenario. We're looking at a minimum of 12 to 18 months and possibly a drastically changed normal. And so I think it's really important that we talk about and include in these operating agreements and make it very, very clear who's responsible for what. Because I don't think that this is going to be the last time that we're under social distancing restrictions. And so I think we just got to keep our eye on that for the future and make sure that that is included and that we think about that particular scenario in these operating agreements when we're drafting them and when we're in discussion with potential operators.
Your Honor, you just sparked an interesting thought, and it's the culmination of a bunch of conversations over the last few weeks. The concept of I'm a, I'm a renter or I'm going to buy a house and the lender requires me to purchase mortgage insurance. The insurance doesn't give me the buyer any protection at all. It protects the mortgage company. I'm thinking, based on what you just said, because I think the nation's response to pandemics going forward could be different than it ever was in the past, based on this scenario. Perhaps there's a type of coverage we could build into that agreement, like a business interruption insurance that we require an operator to provide to fill in those gaps should businesses be interrupted. And tournaments don't happen for a summer because of a pandemic. We may be able to ensure our way around that risk, thinking about that in advance. So thank you for throwing that on the table.
And I would really like to consider that because apparently Wimbledon isn't crying too badly about having to cancel their tournament because they had insurance coverage that included pandemics. So they lost nothing. So great, I appreciate that. My next question also has to do with these projects, but more about the actual bond and financial side. So maybe this is a question for Anthony. You know, I know in previous meetings, we've talked a lot about the increased property taxes for homeowners. But it is not uncommon for commercial leaseholders to pay the property taxes on the building that they are leasing. And so what are we looking at in terms of average monthly or annual property tax increases for commercial properties? Because that is, if, if the tenant is not paying the property tax bill themselves, they will pay for it in increased rent. And so I'd like us to have a sense of what that cost increase is going to be because that also kind of circles back to my concern about the Business Recovery Package being bond financed. You know, if my rent goes up because, but I also have access to this, to a loan, you know, does that balance out? So Anthony, do we have any insight on that?
Not really, because that would be between, that would be between the property owner and the, and the tenant. Property taxes are paid directly by the property owner. Sometimes they pass it on to the tenant, sometimes they pass it on fully. You would hope that they wouldn't pass on more than the property taxes that they have been paying. But, but that's totally between the tenant and the property owner.
But we don't have any idea of what the increase in property taxes for commercial properties will look like?
We have, we presented to council, I believe it's session two, what the, what the estimated impacts would be for various property values. And those property values are, it's irrelevant whether they're residential or commercial. It's just the value of the property.
Okay, thank you. I'll go back and, I'll go back and take a look at that. So then my, I guess my, well, Councilmember Wilson asked if the Business Recovery Package would be a separate proposition. But Catherine, you made it sound like if this is comparable to what we did on stormwater, makes me think, would this require a 60% threshold?
No, it's just limited to five mils.
Okay.
This isn't, you know, the public utility on property the city doesn't own or anything like that or, or under the same section as public utilities. This is a totally different section, so it's limited to five mils on the dollar, which is a lot more than what I think we'd be talking about this project or with this program.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't looking at a drastically increased threshold for support. And so I guess it's not really a question, but more just something I want us to be kind of cautious about with this Business Recovery Package. I'm optimistic about it, but I really feel like we need to be sure before, certainly before we pass it, but definitely before it goes to the voters, we need to keep an eye on oversight of this. How are these grants going to be awarded? If it's going to be a committee or a commission? Who is going to serve on it? Who makes those decisions? Data gathering on the types of businesses that have been awarded with an eye on ensuring appropriate representation of all kinds of business owners in Norman and businesses of all sizes. You know, this is something, has been kind of a percolating issue with especially disaster loans in the past, not having great oversight of who is getting these loans or how much and whether or not one industry or one type of business is siphoning off all the money. And that's already come up as a concern with Oklahoma City's program. Who's going to be overseeing it? Who gets to determine who gets the money, what the criteria is going to be? None of that stuff was really fleshed out before they passed it. And I've heard from at least one council member that that was something that they wished they had thought about before they passed it. So I just want to be sure we think about it.
You are exactly right. And sometimes that is one of the beauties of being second. To be able to learn from those mistakes, from our neighbors to the north, having, you know, waded into it with great intentions and not fully understanding all of the questions or, or roadblocks that'll come up in front of them. The concept of between now and, you know, second reading in June, to be able to, I mean, even identify software to manage that loan portfolio. This could be something where council sets up the loan criteria, dollar amounts for different categories of businesses and different approved business uses. I think we'll gain a lot of insight as to what the demand looks like from the survey that, that we hope to roll out to the business community in a week or two. And, and, and once we've kind of put our arms around, here's what we think the need is to allow council to put their fingerprints on loan criteria. And I would say it's probably not realistic to think all of the loan applications would come back on a council agenda for council approval. That could be a very long, in-depth process. But the establishment of a body that would administer the loan programs according to your parameters that could include local business leaders and, you know, even local bankers who understand how to track all those loan balances and read a loan application and understand your policy opportunities versus what they may have seen under the SBA umbrella, et cetera. I think we've got some wonderful expertise available to us in the community that would allow us to put together a really good committee to, to serve as that loan review board and, you know, make the final approvals, you know, subject to your criteria. That's kind of what we were talking about as, as early as today, as a matter of fact.
Great. And my, kind of my last point on that is I would really like to prioritize businesses that were not able to receive any kind of federal assistance. I think that that needs to be our first priority. You know, that funding is limited, it's going to run out, there's never any guarantee that more funding will be authorized. And so I'd really like to ensure, maybe, maybe that won't be very many businesses. But I would like, I would like us to ensure that if this program passes, that those who were not able to get federal assistance are the first that we serve.
Well, Councilmember, I'll throw in on that. We know that our dispensaries cannot get any aid from the federal government. In a conversation with Maureen Hammond from the Norman Economic Development Coalition, some of our entrepreneurs don't qualify because they didn't reach certain levels. So again, this time I'm very happy to be second, so we can learn from their mistakes and, and. So again, this time I'm very happy to be second, so we can learn from their mistakes and, and have time to do a needs assessment and see exactly who needs the help and what the holes are in the federal and state packages.
I completely agree. And I am still kind of on the fence about how I feel about doing this in August. I don't really think that things have changed all that much since the last time we talked about it and I was still concerned then. I did a little research into it yesterday and cities all across the country are postponing their bond elections, not until August, but until November, and some have even said not till next year. Let's get through the second or the third wave that we might have before the end of the year, before we start talking about these things. So I'm glad that we're talking about it. I'm glad that we are continuing to do our due diligence for whenever this comes up. As of now, I'm still not super comfortable with a, with a June vote from council, but we'll see where we are because as we all know, the landscape changes by the day and like a year. So we'll see where we're, see where we're at in a, in a few weeks. But I, I do think that it's important for us to have these conversations because a few weeks ago, I don't think I would have even thought to ask about things like who's going to be paying for these facilities if we have to close them for an entire season. We need to think about those things early. So I appreciate it. I don't have any more questions for now.
And Councilman Beerman, I appreciate the comment about, you know, delaying elections just generally, but again, these, some of these are so time constrained, especially with the one that could provide aid to businesses and economy, economy, economy is, you know, this is the most stressful balancing act I've ever done in my life in terms of public safety and the economy. And so that honestly is what makes me comfortable with the August. I'm glad that the federal government helped out with the bond package or the piece of the bond for the transportation, because that was obviously very timely. But we're talking public safety and EOC and I, I really wish, this is a sidebar, we could get the Oklahoma State Election Board to get rid of their notarizing requirement on absentee ballots. That would sure make me feel a whole lot better and further pushing that, but that's a conversation for another day. So.
I also encourage everyone to sign up as a notary. Everyone do their part.
That's definitely one way to.
Okay, Mayor, we have two more hands raised in about 14 minutes before we have to start the next meeting. So Councilmember Hall, I believe, is next.
Okay, I'll make this short. I've had a lot of my questions answered already, but I did want to circle back to the Senior Wellness Center and appreciated Mr. Cotton pointing out that we still have a significant lack of certainty on how that's all going to move forward. So I was hoping we could get an update on where we stand and obviously the landscape has changed pretty significantly with our Norman Regional Health System. I keep being told that the land piece is taken care of, but I would like to get an update on where we are currently.
You bet, your honor, and I'll ask Catherine to help me round out the picture. This was a priority on the front burner and suddenly became a back burner issue. As responsive as Norman Regional has been, I mean, honestly, for the last nine months, I send an email and get just rapid replies and very responsive and we're able to move the ball forward. This one, it's, the, the world has slowed down if it's, it's not a conversation directly related to the care of members of our community. So I know that they're still on board with the, the entire program. It's just trying to break them loose from their current hands-on, day-to-day activity to get back to the table on this one. And I know we're waiting on a couple of pieces of information. But I, I, I think as soon as we start to exhale on COVID-19, it's a thing we can get back to relatively quickly. My guess is, you know, escrow isn't a lengthy process here because we know there aren't any liens on any of the property and it may just be the most complicated piece is, is new legal descriptions. So Catherine, anything else we need to share at this point?
No, I think that about covered it. I think it's just, but the other things they have going on, it's a little more slow going. Or a lot more slow going right now. They're a little busy with other things. So this is not, I don't think top of the pile for them right now, but I think it will be once things slow down again.
Okay, so how, how important is it to know where we stand with that as we move forward with the entire package?
In my opinion, the status of the real property transaction is, it's a, a minor issue, concerned thought. I, I don't have any, any fear that this is not going to happen on the Porter campus as council envisions it through the presentations provided by Norman Regional. So confidence is very high. And, and the scope of the project itself really doesn't change whether it was at Reeves Park or at the Porter Campus. So I consider this a very minor issue to be clarified before construction drawings are finalized.
And can I add in that I'm glad that the numbers, the numbers don't include 5 million towards the 5 million from the proceeds of the sale. So for me in my head, worst case scenario, with what we put forward, kind of what Councilman Rehulman was touching on, we've paid for it with this. And so worst case scenario, we don't have the land, we're going back to Reeves Park, which it will happen. And, and I, again, I, I share their confidence with the, the Porter Campus, but I'm glad that we have a backup plan, kind of with some other speed bumps we've seen with Norman Forward. So, but I was, I again appreciated they took out that kind of accounting in the, in the, how we put the budget for the project together.
Okay. In the interest of time, I'm going to just stop with that and let somebody else have a chance to ask their question.
Okay, I think we have Councilmember Scanlon, who I left out last time, so.
Tail end Charlie again. I'll be very brief and I don't really have to involve the transit grant. This scratches an itch that, that goes well before we even inherited the buses in the sense that we needed a facility for great big trucks like fire trucks to work on. This helps us there. This is a good thing. The economic recovery bond, I'm absolutely in favor of. I've had some feedback from constituents saying, why are you dumping this on me? That's just another addition of to my property tax. Why should I do this? But if the thing is done properly, particularly if it establishes a revolving fund, as was talked about a little while ago, this is a great thing. Regarding to sales tax collections in the future, it's a good thing. I, I just can't say it often enough that if we don't do this thing properly, if we downsize it, make it fit the budget as opposed to coming up with a budget that and the chief was talking about the ad hoc nature of working command for this, this, this virus reaction. I've seen part of it where they set up in the conference room at the police station only to knock it down because they have other meetings following. It, 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 we need a dedicated location. There's no question in my mind. And, and the background I bring to the table in working crises like this, it's really important to have adequate to need. The, the final point I'll make has to do with, with the homeless thing. I earlier on was in favor of something sooner than later, but as I listened to the discussion and, and, and I reflect on some of the conversations I've had with Dan Strong at the Homeless Alliance. I like the notion of bringing people along. I've seen too much in ward meetings and, and, and phone calls and so on about why we, why are we doing this? We should be spending our us to find this and to sell it, quite frankly. And that maybe is a crass way of looking at it, but I think it's important. And on the subject of homelessness, and I'll just make this, this comment. It appears that any kind of homeless facility is certainly a year or more in the future. But I hope that we're thinking about in the back hallways somewhere of what we do about a warming shelter for this coming winter. And I'll shut up at that point. Thank you.
Okay, we need to get to that last slide to make some decisions. I will throw in two things about myself, one on the homeless portion of the package. I just want to make sure that that 5 million, if we move forward with it, is tied to actions identified in the strategic plan. And we have got to do the strategic plan first. And second, I, based on the feedback from Griffin Park, I would like to see if we can get the ad hoc committee back together. Because if they're on the fence about this major indoor facility, that is a big chunk and I would really like to have them 100% behind that if we're going to add that in. So with that, can you bring up the last slide, please, Mr. Cotton?
Sure. I apologize.
Believe, no worries. I believe you can hear me, even though your screen is being shared, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So decisions to be made, the timing of the potential bond election. We had a couple of comments about August. I have shared that I support it because of, there was already timely issues and, and we've seen that these projects are on hold. We have to know if we're going to have the money. And I'm, I'm not interested in waiting any longer to move forward on these major projects that involve everything from accessibility at City Hall to public safety to the Norman Forward projects, which can also play a key role in our bouncing back after COVID-19. And I understand Councilor Beerman's concerns, though I don't have to close them. Fortunately, I think they'll take a couple of years to build. So there's I think the only time I've been excited about that fact. And then also the business recovery package and making sure we have that accessible to both entrepreneurs and businesses that maybe have had to pause, had to completely shut down or are trying to get started. So we need feedback on the, the potential bond election for August. Catherine, can you give us those dates one more time about when we would have first and second reading?
Sure. First reading would be the second meeting in May. iPad is in delay of my calendar. So that would, thank you, May 26th and second reading would be the first meeting in June, which is June 9th.
So we have a month and a half until first reading and then we have so two more weeks after that to make any additional changes before second reading. So where is everybody at? Brenda, would it be best to do roll call on that since I can't really see everybody?
I will start. Councilmember Patron has her hand up and she did before you went to that last thing. So we'll start with her.
My apologies.
Okay, um, thank you, Brenda. Um. Okay, so I'm not 100% sure that let me just put it this way. Am I understanding, Mr. Cotton, that with each one of those monetary totals, that it was basically you're asking us or telling us that the architects are going to need tied over money basically for the next few months in order to maintain momentum?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, they're, they're really, I mean, as we said in the very first session, they're at this juncture and they need to decide which, they need direction on which way to go. I don't think I can say that for every single project, but there are several that are like that.
Yeah. So here's how I kind of overall feel about that. If, if we're going to be hurrying to an August election, I don't see the point in spending money on any of them. We'll let the voters tell us if that's, if this is the vision that they want, then they'll tell us that. We, I don't think we need to spend several million dollars between now and then, or at least several hundred thousands. Some of them are really high. Just to know, if they voted down, we've just wasted a bunch of money when it's just a few months. I don't see why we would even spend it at all. If you're talking about three months. I mean, would any of us run our own household that way? Would you wait to find out if you're going to get the loan before you go ahead and invest all of your life savings? I mean, it's basically one thing that we're short on around here, it's cash. So that's kind of how I feel about that. As far as the business package, I just would need a whole lot more fleshing out to really know what direction that we're going with that. I would love to see male minority owned businesses getting preferential treatment for once in the business world and maybe some affordable housing being something that we would prioritize in a loan. You know, just, I have, I've just seen a whole lot more questions answered on that. I'm not opposed to it, but it's just such a generic thing to say, like, we're going to give money to businesses. Well, what is a small business? How do you define small business? We would really have an opportunity to steer the kinds of businesses that we would like to see in Norman as a council. So I wouldn't really want us to completely release oversight in the way that was kind of discussed before with just bankers doing it and your, the typical business leaders that we see. I would hope that we would be more inclusive and I would like to know from the city manager if there's a questionnaire you said was going out on those. How can we be a part of that process? How can we share that to the people that we know? So it's getting a further reach than the typical businesses that answer these questionnaires. And so, yeah, I guess my question, my, my biggest concern is that if, if we're going to do an August election and let the voters decide whether or not this is the vision that they want, because ultimately it's up to them. So if this is what they want to do, I don't see why we're going to spend a ridiculous amount of money for a few months when it's just a few months.
Mayor, I think what I might add now is we are totally out of time. They, I do think there's information, Councilmember Patron, that city manager pile and the mayor can share with you about this questionnaire and we'll get that out to council as a whole. I would also encourage you all to, any other questions, for those of you that didn't have the opportunity to ask tonight, just go ahead and email those to city manager pile or myself and we will try to get answers to those questions. I am also going to go ahead and schedule a follow-up on this topic for the April 28th council conference slot. Because we have an opening there and we can come back and try to wrap up some of these final details, but it would really, really be helpful if you all, all the concerns and questions or that you want answered so that we can take advantage of that time to get those as soon as possible would be greatly appreciated. Mayor, you want to add a closing statement?
Besides that, I mean, I haven't heard anyone, you know, any cries of outrage for moving forward for August. So I mean, if we're going to continue discussing August 28th, please send your questions in. The, the business recovery thing is quite, quite novel. See, I learned a new word through this whole thing and used it in a sentence. That's right. So, but, but then let's, let's plan on doing that. And, and send your questions in. And I think that's, that's all I have to move us forward at this time. But thank you for going ahead and getting us on that schedule and for everyone watching, if you're following this as well, April 28th will be the continued discussion regarding this item. Brenda, are we closing this meeting or are we keeping it going and?
We're keeping one Zoom meeting going. Those of you that do not wish to carry on to the regular council meeting, this does not apply to you, council members. You may go ahead and log off and leave the meeting, but we will be picking up just shortly with our regular council session.
Yeah, everyone, let's take like two minutes to, you know, get a drink of water, grab dinner, whatever you need to do and I will see, don't close out, just, you know, turn your video and your sound off and we will resume shortly.
Let me pause it. Okay, I paused it for a second.
Pause the recording?
Yeah.
That's fine. We are still live streaming.
That's okay. I'm muting everybody.
National origin, age or handicap or familial status. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2020 as Fair Housing Month. Item five, proclamation nineteen twenty dash thirty-nine commemorating Sunday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty as the twenty-fifth anniversary of the bombing of the Alfred P. Muro Federal Building in downtown Oklahoma City. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Affirmative.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes. Yes, sorry, yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
That proclamation is approved unanimously.
A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma commemorating Sunday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty as the twenty-fifth anniversary of the bombing of the Alfred P. Muro Federal Building in downtown Oklahoma City. Whereas on April nineteenth, nineteen ninety-five, Americans' perception of themselves and their institutions changed forever and brought together the people of our nation. And whereas the resulting deaths of one hundred and sixty-eight people, some of whom were children, immediately touched thousands of family members whose lives will forever bury the scars of having had those precious to them taken away so brutally. Whereas the responses of Oklahoma's public servants and private citizens, as well as those throughout the nation, remain as a testament to the sense of unity, compassion, even heroism that characterized their rescue and recovery following the bombing. And whereas there is a one-hundred-year-old English elm tree across the street from the Muro Building that survived the bombing named the Survivor Tree with an inscription that reads, "The spirit of this city and this nation will not be defeated. Our deeply rooted faith sustains us." And whereas the City of Norman obtained twenty-five seedlings from the Survivor Tree at the Oklahoma City Memorial, and when those trees are ready, they will be planted at various locations in the City of Norman to continue to memorialize those who died or were affected by this tragic event. Whereas the City of Norman has planted an English elm tree in Andrews Park to commemorate the twenty-fifth anniversary and is planning a ceremony to dedicate it in the near future. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaim and commemorate Sunday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty as the twenty-fifth anniversary of the bombing of the Alfred P. Muro Federal Building in downtown Oklahoma City. And urge all citizens of the City of Norman to watch the virtual remembrance ceremony on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, and to observe the hundred and sixty-eight seconds of silence in memory of the lives lost that day. Okay, now moving on to item six, the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items seven through twenty-three on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items seven through twenty-three on the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously and items seven through twenty-three were placed on the consent docket.
Item seven, ordinance nineteen twenty dash forty-two upon first reading granting special use for a public utility at property approximately half-mile south of East Robinson Street and half-mile east of Forty-Eighth Avenue Northeast. Item eight, ordinance nineteen twenty dash forty-three upon first reading closing a platted forty-seven-point-one-eight-foot pedestrian easement along the west boundary of lots twenty-three and twenty-four, Block One, Carrington Place Edition, Section Five, thirty-eight-twelve and thirty-eight-sixteen, Dalston Circle. Item nine, mayor's appointments of Amy Johnson and Elizabeth Barfield of the Public Arts Board, Rick Roberts to the Board of Adjustment, and J.W. Dansby and Mark Etters to the Board of Appeals. Item ten, authorization to purchase a forklift for the household hazardous waste facility. Item ten, bid contract and bonds with Horseshoe Construction Incorporated in the amount of two million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents in change order number one at no extra cost or no extra calories for the FYE twenty-seventeen sewer maintenance project and budget transfer between project accounts. Item twenty-seven, acceptance of a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from Mr. Fred Smith to be used the Norman Animal Welfare Center. Item thirteen, amendment number one to the FYE twenty-fifth-year action plan for the forty-fifth-year Norman Community Development Block Grant Program. Item fourteen, final plot for High Point Office Complex, array plot of Block Five, Smoking Oak Number One, and acceptance of public dedications contained therein located at the northwest corner of Highway Nine and McGee Drive. Item fifteen, final acceptance and final payment of contract with Flint Co. LLC for the Norman Central Library Project. Item sixteen, amendment number three to contract with PDG LLC doing business as Planning Design Group, increasing contract by three hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars for a revised amount of one million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to provide professional architectural design services for the city park maintenance and transit fire maintenance facilities to be co-located at the north base complex and budget transfer between project accounts. Item seventeen, final acceptance and final payment of the contract with Downey Construction Company Incorporated for the Norman Forward Neighborhood Park Concrete Trails Project. Item eighteen, final acceptance and final payment of amendment number one to contract eighteen nineteen dash one thirty-two with Flint Co. LLC for the construction of the Norman Forward Griffin Park Phase Three Project. Item nineteen, change order number one to the contract with Nash Construction Company Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-four cents for a revised contract amount of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, fifty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents for the McCall Drive Reconstruction Project and final acceptance of the project. Item twenty, final acceptance and final payment of the contract with Merritt Tennis and Track Systems for the Twelfth Avenue Recreation Center Pickleball Courts Project. Item twenty-one, contract with SMC Consulting Engineers PC in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars to provide the final plot design of the Saxon Industrial Park Project. Item twenty-two, contract with RKG Associates Incorporated in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars for preparation of an analysis of impediments to fair housing choices part of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-four consolidated plan. Item twenty-three, resolution transferring twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars from Americans with Disability ADA Sidewalk Compliance Audit and Repair to ADA Building and Parks Evaluation to be used for the ADA Compliance Evaluations of Eight City-Owned Buildings and Three City Parks. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Please raise your hand if you have a comment.
I see no comments, Mayor.
All right, seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item twenty-four, off consent, resolution encouraging landlords to cease evictions during the next ninety days, encouraging tenants who are past due on rent payments and their landlords to work cooperatively to develop payment arrangement that will ensure housing stability, and strongly urging the governor of Oklahoma to enact a temporary moratorium on all evictions in the state. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So Mayor, no move.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Kathryn Walker, our city attorney, to make comments.
Sorry about that. This item was brought forward at the request of council. It kind of outlines throughout the whereas clauses what efforts have been made at other levels, but we recognize there are still gaps. And so it would request landlords to cease evictions for at least the next ninety days. And, um, sorry, I'm trying to pull it up real quick. My link's not working, Brenda. Um. Here we go. Cease evictions in the next ninety, for at least the next ninety days, encourage landlords to work with tenants who are past due on rent payments, to develop realistic payment plans and promote housing stability. And then, as the mayor said in the title, encouraging governors to sign an executive order imposing a temporary moratorium on evictions across the state. This has been done by fifteen other governors across the country, and it's not something that's been done here yet, although our district court has taken some really important actions to delay some of these actions. This would give a little more time and a little more assurance if landlords would follow this. It is just encouragement. We don't have jurisdiction over these types of matters under state law, so we can't force landlords to do this, but it is something we would strongly encourage them to do based on council's feedback.
To clarify, the governor's moratorium would have the power to do that, correct?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scott to make an amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I move that section twenty of Resolution R dash one nine-two-zero dash one-zero-six be amended to read that landlords in Norman are strongly encouraged to dismiss any forcible entry and detainments filed since March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, and to cease filing new evictions for at least ninety days from the date of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any comments from council regarding this amendment? Councilwoman Wilson?
Over here, suffering in silence. Um, I appreciate that amendment. I don't really, I don't have mine pulled up to see what it said prior, so I support that, though. It sounds appropriate. But my comment is that I'm getting some conversations from, or some pushback, I guess, from landlords feeling vulnerable as well. So I'd like to at least acknowledge that we understand that this is a vulnerable time that's very unprecedented in the whole globe, and that we haven't forgotten about the landlords, that the conversations we've been having in the study session prior to this were concerns around making sure the landlords are also protected in some way in, as far as funding and those kinds of things. I really think that this is a beautiful resolution that says, "We, as a council, support our community, and we want to make sure the landlords in our community are all working together to help those that are not fortunate enough to have owned a property where they can go get their mortgage ceased for maybe two months or whatever, that they also have housing security, and that this is not in any way an opportunity for people to all of a sudden take advantage of the system." You're going to have bad players no matter what you do, but that this is just us being leaders in our state and in our community and asking for us all to pull together, link hand in hand, arm in arm, and say, "We're all in this together." So I just wanted to acknowledge that we haven't forgotten about the landlords and that there are a lot of good landlords out there already doing this. So landlords, we love you, but we have some very vulnerable people in our community.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Well said. Are there any other comments regarding the amendment proposed by Councilwoman Scott? Seeing none. Are there, da-da-da-da? The motion on the floor is to amend section twenty of Resolution nineteen twenty dash one oh six, to be again amended to read that landlords in Norman are strongly encouraged to dismiss any forcible entry and detainers filed since March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, and to cease filing new evictions for at least ninety days from the date of this resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman. One moment. Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The amendment passes unanimously.
Are there any comments from council regarding the whole resolution as amended? Please raise your hand if you have a comment.
Councilmember Beerman.
Yes. So I wanted to kind of chime in with Councilmember Wilson and just to remind landlords that they do have options available to them, not only with mortgage forbearance, but also in the small business economic impact disaster loans and the paycheck protection program. Being a landlord is a business, most structure it that way. And even if you're not and you receive income from it, you are eligible under the paycheck protection program. However, as a renter, the most assistance you might be getting is a twelve-hundred-dollar stimulus check and possibly some unemployment. So the options are not equal. And so I know that landlords feel that, feel that this is an imbalance for them, but I strongly encourage them to talk to their bank, or if they don't have a relationship with a bank, make one. Talk to them about the programs that you're eligible for because you do have options. There is support out there for you. And we want landlords to stay solvent and to stay financially healthy, but we also need tenants to be as well. And sheltering at home, having a home is a public health priority. I mean, having a home is medical care right now, and we need to be cognizant of that and not even, and the one thing, okay, I'm just going to, I'm going to throw it out there, the one thing that this resolution does not cover are all the non-legal ways that landlords, mostly the bad actors, can pressure renters into paying or leaving. There are lots of ways that don't involve the court system. And so my hope is that landlords will not utilize this as a way to find another way to, you know, try and squeeze blood out of a stone. We're all hurting right now, and we all want to care for each other. And right now, the best way to do that is for everyone to stay at home. And the only way you can do that is if you have a home. So let's just keep that in mind for the next ninety days and see where we are then.
Thank you, Councilmember. Also, well said. Councilwoman Scott.
A question about, so we talk about forcible entry. So is that done? Is that whenever evictions are filed, is that conducted by our police officers going in and forcibly removing tenants?
No, that is just what they call the legal action of filing for an eviction. The only time the police get involved, and it's typically the sheriff's department, they're just serving process to the renter. If they refuse to leave and if a judge orders them to leave, the police could get involved to force that, or the landlord sometimes moves their belongings out of the apartment or out of the house. But no, our police aren't typically involved in that.
Okay. Um, I had a follow-up question. Are the judges processing evictions at this time?
No, just last week, they clarified their order, I think it was April sixth or seventh, and all of those dockets are suspended. I've talked to one of the two judges that handles those, as well as had some communication from our office with the presiding judge.
Okay, last question is, do we have any kind of squatters rights ordinance in Norman or in Oklahoma that we know of?
No, there's nothing in Oklahoma currently along those lines that I'm aware of, certainly nothing in Norman, and I don't know of anything in state law that sets out those kind of rights.
Is that something that we have jurisdiction to implement?
I don't think we would, but just because we don't have jurisdiction really over landlord tenant issues in general.
Okay, you have several other hands up. Mayor, Councilmember Petron.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Scott. Councilwoman Petron.
Well, I wanted to first start out by thanking Kathryn. This is really speedy work on behalf of City Legal. We started this conversation, I was just checking back, April first, and she really responded to our emails very quickly with lots of detail and memos that kind of let us know how far we could go. I think every single one of us would have liked to have gone further, just because we can see how dangerous it is to be homeless anyway and the threat that many in our community face right now. I mean, the last thing, if we were to have our shelters to be overrun, you're just talking about not only the heartbreak, but the public health side of that is just unconscionable. So I just want to thank Kathryn for really putting this together in a speedy way and making it as full-throated as we could, and I appreciate Councilmember's amendment to make it even more so. So I agree with the comments that Councilmember Beerman and Councilmember Wilson. Second, what Councilmember Beerman said, that there is economic help available to landlords that I definitely would suggest that they sign up for. And hopefully, this is a short-term thing. I mean, we really want this behind us, but I just appreciate everybody coming together and the compassionate work. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Holman.
Thank you. Yes, I also just gave staff, Kathryn, a work on this in a short amount of time, although, you know, this doesn't require anybody to do anything, nobody's being forced to be understanding or to have a heart. But, and people say that about proclamations and resolutions all the time, that what does that really mean? It doesn't make anybody, you know, but for some people, just the idea that their city government makes an official statement about something really can mean a lot. So I think just the symbolism of us saying, "These are tough times for everybody. Please, in the City of Norman, be understanding of your neighbors, your tenants," who, you know, one of the things I've heard from property owners before is that, you know, getting a good tenant is really difficult sometimes, and so you want to keep a good tenant for as long as you can. So, you know, being understanding that if somebody has lost their job, they might not be able to pay right now, but they've been a good tenant otherwise, to work with them. Thankfully for me, that I still have a check coming in and haven't had to, had an issue paying my rent, but I do want to give a shout to the lady that owns my house. She's already communicated that she'd be more than willing to work with me if there was a situation. And same thing with the building owner that friendly market is in, that if we had a situation, they'd be willing to work with us because we're a really good tenant and they want to keep us there when this is all over. So I'm just thankful for all that and everybody's work. I think it means a lot to a lot of people in our community that we are making an official statement. Again, I know that if I missed, if I missed just two paychecks, I would have a very hard time paying my rent here. That's absolutely for certain. So, and so many other people in that same situation. So for landlords, you're not required to do anything if you don't want to, but we're just encouraging you to please be understanding, and I can definitely understand that there's pressure on you as well. So as my colleagues have mentioned, there are lots of resources available, and I would hope that anything the city government can do to help direct you to those resources, that somebody at City Hall would be available to help you out there. So thank you, and thanks for the amendment, too. I appreciate that. I'm happy to support that.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I appreciate your comments of when we get through this, because we will.
Lady, have Councilmember Scanlon.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes, indeed. I think that a sense of council resolution such as this is really is important, very important, as Councilmember Holman was just saying. We really need to step up to issues like this. And I thought a lot about this. I posted the gist of the resolution on Facebook to see what kind of reaction I'd get. And two reactions. One having to do with landlords have bills, two, and I think that Councilmember Wilson and Beerman addressed that, there are avenues open to those people, and hopefully they'll take advantage of it. The other comment I heard was really about the last sentence of the resolution, strongly urging the governor of the state to do something. I think it's neat that we're saying that. How are we going to communicate that to the governor of this state? Send him a copy of the resolution? Send him a letter? I think it is important that we communicate this, and more than just talking to ourselves about it, we need to present it to him.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Hall.
Councilwoman Hall.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to also thank Kathryn Walker for her very quick response, quick response to this request from council and how we could move forward at the pace that we did. So thank you for your work on that. And I do agree with my other colleagues that this is just a really important statement to make on behalf of our city council, so that our community understands that we may not always agree on everything, but when it comes to looking out for all of the members of our community, that we stand strong with them, and this is just one way that we can communicate that in these unprecedented times. And I also want to publicly thank the landlords that I have been told about anecdotally through my business owners in Ward Four and residents of Norm Four, who, you know, fortunately, they might, they have been in a position to be able to offer voluntarily some assistance or just the conversation of how to work things out. So I know those conversations are going on in our community and appreciate our landlords understanding the situation, and this is affecting all of us in so many unintended ways all across the board. But I really appreciate those landlords who have already reached out to try to work out an agreement and some kind of extended payment plan so that people can stay where they are. So I appreciate that effort from that part of our community as well.
I agree. Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other comments from council regarding this item?
I see none from council. Mayor, I do have a couple of comments that came in from the public.
Okay, let's have those comments now, please.
And these comments are, these comments came in from Mark Campbell. He says, "I live in HUD Section Eight Housing, and we haven't been notified about coronavirus guidelines. The office is closed due to COVID-nineteen." The HUD office, I believe he's referring to, "This city needs to mandate that landlords educate their tenants about COVID-nineteen, especially if there are a large number of units and public gathering spaces." And he also asked if landlords have the obligation to notify residents about extreme numbers of visitors during COVID-nineteen. In other words, nonessential visits. I'm assuming like repair visits or maintenance visits. He says he contacts the police, and the landlords say they contact the police, the police say to contact your landlord. Little frustration.
Okay, thank you for showing that, Mr. Campbell. Any other comments from the public regarding this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a, two more public comments.
Okay.
Up here from Keith McCabe. "As a landlord property owner, I fully understand your recommendations, and I agree with the meaning of the stated resolution. Robert Campbell would also like to know if the landlords have a duty to notify residents of excessive visits from people who do not live at the complex during COVID-nineteen." That's all the public comments we have.
All right, thank you all for those public comments. The motion on the floor is to approve the resolution as amended. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Affirmative.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The resolution as amended is adopted unanimously.
Thank you. Item twenty-five, our first public hearing on the FYE two thousand and twenty-one City of Norman budget. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmembers Carter.
Yeah.
Councilmember Petron. Councilmember Patron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon. Councilmember Scanlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The public hearing is now opened unanimously. I have a couple of emails we've received previously, but I think Mr. Francisco has a brief presentation.
Before we begin that and start with the public input, I want to remind everyone watching that you can give us the public input by sending an email to thecityclerk@normanok.gov or by calling 405-366-5406 or by sending comments via social media. Staff will be monitoring those sites and will share those comments with us and read them into the record. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director, and I am trying to pull up this presentation. Okay, so is what shows up on your screen? Does it have a one or a two at the top left?
Not, you need to do share screen first, Anthony.
I did.
At the bottom.
I did.
I don't see it.
Bryce is going to come help you out, Anthony, if you want to kind of just start walking, talking through it.
Okay. This is the first of two public budget hearings that will be held related to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. The second of the public hearings will be held on May 26th at the council meeting. The fiscal year. They said it's not showing up.
That was awesome, the way Bryce came out of your background. I just want to say.
I thought that was a green screen.
It was like a ghost.
Okay.
I can see it now. Please continue.
They're seeing that one. Okay. Um. Okay. The fiscal year 21 budget for all funds has projected revenues of $225,112,595. The largest source of revenue for our city government is sales tax. And obviously, that is of concern. We made projections of, of what we would project to bring in from our sales taxes before the COVID pandemic came to pass. Since it has come to pass, we have projected some of those revenues downward. But we are highly uncertain about what the impacts will finally be. So we just have clouds over the budget related to COVID and related to some other factors. But at this point in the city manager's proposed budget process, these are our total revenues as projected. Our total expenditures as projected are $280,873,000. With the major sources of expenditure being for public safety, water reclamation, water, and public works. The general fund is the largest single revenue fund of the city. We are projecting $85,902,000 to come in to the general fund in the coming fiscal year. Again, the largest source of revenue to our general fund is sales and use tax, which is 60% of the revenue picture. And as has been pointed out earlier in this meeting, no other state would have a revenue pie that looks like this in the general fund. Oklahoma cities are much more reliant on sales and use tax than cities in any other state. This, this pie would look much more balanced in the general fund in any other state. On the expenditure side, we project to spend $84.9 million in fiscal year 21 with the major sources of expenditure being for police, for public works, and for emergency response, particularly in the fire department. We now open for public comment. As we go forward in the budget process between now and when the council will finally consider the budget for adoption, we invite input from the public to be given through the city's Action Center. The Action Center email address is given there. The budget is available for the public's perusal on the city's website, normanok.gov. And we now open it up for public comment.
I have a quick question, if that's allowed.
Go ahead, Mayor.
My question is, when will we receive the first sales tax receipts? I mean, it's two months out, right? So when will we receive Aprils to see how bad we've actually been hit from the changes we've had to make?
We have received our April remittance, but remember that that reflects sales during February.
That, that's what I meant. Like, when will we get the sales, the remittance reflecting April sales?
April sales will be reflected in June. The June remittance that we would get, right around June the 10th.
And by June, we should not only have a picture of the hit that we took, but also where we're at with returning to normal and what that looks like. So I guess that's the best we can hope for right now.
Yes, ma'am. The, I like to think that we started to see the impacts of businesses closing and those sorts of things right around March the 12th. I remember very well when you came into our management team meeting and talked about the possibility of doing that. And that's when the real changes started to come. So we will start to have a reflection of that in our May remittance from the State Tax Commission, which will reflect March sales. So we'll have some partial data, hard data for that time. But really, it's not until June the 10th or thereabouts that we'll have a full month of returns that are reflecting the impacts of what we're seeing now.
Thank you. Hopefully, the changes that we've made to allow nonessential businesses to make sales online and deliver will, will help a little bit. You know, we're constantly adjusting this and looking for ways, again, with that crucial balance of bolstering and supporting our economy, but also making our public safety and health a priority. So thank you for that. But for now, let's begin with the public comments, please.
Okay, Mayor, we've had a couple come in via email, one of which, I believe, the entire council, where it's copied on this morning, is from Stephen Ellis. It's a total of nine pages. I'm certainly not going to read all of that into the record, some of which are spreadsheets. But I will sum up what he is saying in his comments in the email. He has two primary points. The PSST, Public Safety Sales Tax, and the Norman Board Sales Tax. Sales and use revenue numbers are screwed up. He says they should be identical, and they aren't. And secondly, generally, the predicted and estimated sales and use tax numbers aren't consistent across the funds. They presuppose different levels of taxable activity.
We have started to work on responses to those questions. There are several potential explanations, including year-end accruals, differences between remittances that we get from the State Tax Commission and what is actually recorded onto our books. But we will, we will prepare a formal response to that question.
Secondly, the second email comes in from Cynthia Rogers. It's, I'm just going to read it verbatim. "Obviously, Councilmembers Carter, Clark, Holman, Scanlon, and Scott did not anticipate the consequences of failing to get constituent buy-in when they voted to approve the amended UNT TIF plan. In an attempt to avoid litigation with OU Foundation, our council leaders set the stage for a legal battle between the referendum supporters and four individuals who challenged the referendum. District Judge Virgin ruled against the referendum, but an appeal is likely. The taxes diverted to the UMP TIF fund this year are in limbo as the court proceedings play out. Now council is banking on the referendum being rejected by June 30th as it winds down this year's budget and plans for next year. This seems unlikely given COVID-19-related court delays. It would be short-sighted for the city to root the rejection of the referendum at any rate. In light of the coming COVID-19-related fiscal pressure, giving up public protections and spending $5 million in cash payments for new entertainment uses make even less sense than before. The opportunity to renegotiate the end of the UMP TIF would be a fiscal boon. It offers a chance to put scarce resources toward helping existing local businesses survive the pandemic. COVID-19 has shown us that we can come together and that the city leaders can make tough policy decisions for the good of the community. Now more than ever, we need leaders to spearhead a compromise to resolve the UMP TIF situation. Is anyone at City Hall working towards a compromise plan other than hoping this works out the way the budget plan assumes?
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I see nothing else through email. We've received zero phone calls, I believe. Nothing through social media, Mayor.
Okay. I'm a little surprised by that. All right. Well.
Question?
Oh.
Councilmember Patron.
Um.
Do we need to close the hearing first?
Point of information for future hearings, what do you mean by social media? Like, what site? Is it just any comments people are making on social media anywhere? I mean?
To the city's social media accounts. So the city's Facebook page, the YouTube feed that goes out live. There are comments that come up on that at every meeting, throughout the meeting. So we've been monitoring both our YouTube feed and our social media sites to see if comments are placed on there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And I, okay. The motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Patron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Hall.
Sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Affirmative.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is now closed.
Item 26.
Just as point of information, we will continue our budget study sessions and discussions for the FYE 21 budget in the coming weeks, and followed by our capital budget next Tuesday, for those that would like to stay tuned in. And there will be another public hearing in May.
Thank you. Item 26, miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council, where Mark should be director of council as a whole. Do we have any miscellaneous comments?
Can you come in on social media? Nothing, Mayor.
All right. Are there any council comments? We can start with Ward One. Oh, yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Go ahead, Kate.
There we go. We had the mute wars going on, Brenda and I. So I had actually raised my hand in the public hearing for a question. So I guess I'm, I guess I'm going to ask it now. I feel like I remember last year the public hearings were question and answer and not one way. So, you know, we, I don't know if we're able to put the toothpaste back in the tube for this meeting. But if we could maybe find another opportunity for members of the public to have their questions answered, I feel like I remember that's how it's gone in previous years. And I get the change in venue and the change in technology makes that a little more difficult. But I, I do think we had some questions that, you know, deserve some answers. And I would love to be able to, you know, kind of gather. I haven't had questions coming in on my phone, like while this was going on. And I was like, you need to ask on an official channel. Like, I'm, so, you know, I think that, I, I know that this is all new for everyone. But I think, I think that if we are able to actually get some answers to these questions or at least talk about it a little bit in another, another opportunity, I think that would be helpful. And so then I guess I'll just go into my miscellaneous comment, which is I'm sure that everyone is starting, what I've been noticing is that people are starting to feel the strain of this a little bit more in recent days as opposed to the first few weeks. However, it's also making me a little uncomfortable how many people I'm starting to see out and about again. And I really just want to reiterate that we are not out of the woods yet. Not for Norman, not for Oklahoma. Our peak is still not for another week or so, and I'm really worried about what two weeks from Easter is going to look like. So I just, I just want to encourage everyone to stay the course. I know it gets tough the longer it goes on. But it is really important that we do so. And anyone who has an opportunity to go and, you know, get an antibody test, once it's, once it's available, I certainly recommend that they do so. We're looking at only 5% of the population actually coming into contact with coronavirus, which means that any subsequent outbreaks could be just as impactful as they are this time, because so little of our population actually came in contact with it, which is also a testament to the strong work of Mayor Clark in getting out ahead of it and getting people to stay home. But that does not mean that we're out of the woods now or will be in the future. So anyone who needs masks, holler at me. I got plenty. I got so much fabric and, and ties donated to me from wonderful anonymous people. I would just open my front door and there would be bags of fabric and elastic and ribbon just sitting at my front door. So, and I just, I really want to thank everyone for all of their efforts in so many different areas. I don't think I've ever been happier to have a council with such a wide variety of perspective and interests and abilities to navigate. Hey, Booker, how's it going? And so I just, I'm really thankful for everyone. I'm really thankful for staff to, for continuing to do the work that continues, even when we're all stuck at home. Really hopeful we'll be able to get our city council committees up on Zoom here in the, the not-too-distant future because we are continuing to do some really important work, kind of, that's not coronavirus or public health-related. So I'm just really thankful for everyone. It's really good to see your faces. And looking forward to when we'll all be back in the same room together again. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Beerman. I'm going to put a link in the chat. We were informed in yesterday's emergency management meeting that our peak date has been moved back significantly, which is very, very concerning. It's now looking like April 30th is what they have predicted. So I wanted to, yeah, make sure that everyone had that information. But yes, thank you for your comments. Councilman Carter.
He has nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Patron. And Booker.
Goes on and on. Okay.
Okay, now I'm in the mute wars. All right, Booker, say hello. Hi. He didn't believe me that you all actually saw him.
He said, "They know me."
So I just want to say that I, too, have seen more people out and about here recently, and I know that it's had to do with the pretty weather, although the last 48 hours has been very cold. But, um, yeah, and I know that everybody is so cooped up and sick of it. And I wish that it was that we could just flip a switch and it all goes away. I know we all feel that same frustration, but can't last forever. Anyway, I am encouraged by the conversations tonight, and I feel like that as difficult as this technology as we thought it would be, it seems like it's actually going pretty well. I mean, I, I appreciate staff and the hard work that they've put in to make this a reality that we can keep moving forward with and getting the business of the city done. And so but I do miss you guys' faces in person. I will say that. Not all of you. Just kidding. All right. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall?
Maybe you're not missing everybody's face, you know. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say congratulations to Ward four resident Amy Johnson on her appointment to the Public Arts Board and to all of the other appointments that we approved tonight. And how thankful we are for residents who are willing to volunteer and give their time and expertise for our city on these important boards and commissions. I think maybe our community as a whole underestimates sometimes how important this work is. So I'm always grateful for those residents who are willing to step up. I also just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to all of the residents who have reached out to me personally during this time with their thoughts and concerns. It's been really good to communicate with old friends, but also cross paths with residents that I haven't talked to before. And the thing that has struck me about most of those conversations has been how many people have reached out because they want to help in some way. And they really want to be proactive and understand what the needs of our community are. So we've talked a lot about these things before, but I wanted to just go over a few ways that we can all help. If you're capable and able of helping. I think one of the most important places when people are asking for monetary donations is to support the United Way COVID-19 Response and Recovery Fund. That's been set up in partnership with Food and Shelter for Friends and specifically helps with rental assistance and other, you know, emergency needs. So that's a great way to help our community. I think so many have been supportive of our local restaurants and our local businesses either by ordering food or by buying a gift card. And I know that that's really made a difference in viability of some of our businesses. So I encourage you all to not forget our local restaurants and our local businesses and support them in any way that you can. Another reminder to complete your census form. It's gonna be such a key thing for our city and the future of our city. It was important before, but it's even more important now. So if you haven't taken the opportunity to do it, please do. We're losing the door to door reminder. And so we really have to take it upon ourselves to get that done. So, so please do it for yourself and do it for your community. And also just wanted to talk about our neighbors and our neighborhood and how many stories I've heard of, you know, serious help and also just help to make walking in neighborhoods fun for our children and fun for all of us that are out walking. So I appreciate all the people who are out there organizing their neighborhoods and helping where they can and trying to, you know, find out if you have a neighbor that needs help. So continue that good work. And then I also wanted to make sure to say how grateful I am. And I know I speak for all of you too, to all of the folks who are out there on the front lines to keep our community safe and to keep our community healthy. And obviously, the first ones you think of are our first responders and our healthcare workers. But oh my goodness, I've been so struck by all of the employees that are in our grocery stores and doing deliveries and putting themselves out there. And I just appreciate so much everybody who has to go to work every day right now and some of the risks that they're taking to keep our, the rest of us have the ability to get our food and to get our services that we need. And a big shout out to our city employees who are showing up every day and keeping our city running and, and doing all the hard work of all the other things that have to be taken care of besides addressing this public health emergency. So, so appreciate all the people that are out there doing that. And also just been really reflecting on the challenges of what this is gonna look like on the other side. And I think we're learning a lot about the role of government and the role that government plays in our everyday life. And I think we all know a lot more about public health capacity and infrastructure and how there's going to be lots of ways that we can do better in the future. And I think the other probably overarching discovery is that this virus is the great equalizer and it doesn't recognize party or race or religion or gender. And I think one of the challenges, especially as this wears on and to the comments of people seeing, you know, more people out and about, that we have to continue to take this seriously, but also find the positives where we can. And in the, in the end, you know, make sure you hang on to your compassion and be kind to everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Wilson?
So I just want to say that NormanCommunityRelief.org is still rocking along. And we are doing things like, I don't know, I, I went and bought snuff for Joe, a guy that is elderly and has no family and he didn't want to get out. I know that's a weird thing to do, but I mean, if you're 90 and you want snuff, I'm gonna go buy you some god bang snuff. So I did it. But the other things we've done is I know that my council homie, Councilmember Beerman has worked her patootie off making masks. And I can sew, but not real well. And I haven't really gone down that route because I've made my living just lately as a professional applier for anything that we can get to help our businesses reemerge. And, but shout out to Michelle Trissell in Ward five, who also took on a big old bag of, of extra materials and stuff and turned it into life-saving, you know, PPE. And that during all of this, you know, 20 years from now, like we're talking about the 25 years of after the bombing of the Murrah Building, we will be talking about what were you doing during COVID-19?
Don't you do it.
And I was with you guys. We were making good policies. I'm a crier, y'all. But we are making good, I cuss and I cry, these are my things. We're making good policies to help us go towards our future. And, and I appreciate every one of you. Catherine, I didn't get to say it earlier, but I really appreciate you working on the rent security policy because it is important that the vulnerable citizens in our community are, it's known, I think, Councilmember Holman said, it's just, it, resolutions don't mean a whole lot, but they, they mean a whole lot to some people. So us supporting our, our vulnerable people in our community, which has been a theme since I've been on council, is important. And I know that that makes some people feel uncomfortable because they're landlords or they're in management positions over properties. But, you know, we're in this together, so lockstep, arm in arm. What did we do during COVID-19? This group of people, this community, we came together. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember. That was incredibly well said. Councilwoman Scanlon?
Couple of things. I spent a day or so a month at Food and Shelter. And I did so this month with some trepidation, not knowing how they were operating food distribution and so on. I will hand it to April Hypal and her staff in terms of organizing a food distribution system that protects both the people serving and the clients that come in for the, for the food. It was very well done. I was very impressed. And in the words of a lady I was working with, I felt probably safer there than I might in the grocery store the way it was organized. I learned, however, that the Food and Shelter pantry can use restocking. Certainly in these days where people are unemployed or whatever and food gets to be a problem for some, the rate on that pantry just increases. So I would encourage anybody listening to donate directly to Food and Shelter, any canned or unperishable foodstuffs, or through their local place of worship, that food will get to people that need it. And I think that's an important way we can support folks through this pandemic. The other comment I'd make, I am thankful for the staff top to bottom in terms of the hard work that they do. But there are certain members of the staff by the definition of their jobs are more exposed than others. Codes and parks, utilities, public works, the cops, the fire. Those folks are out and about more than others and, and they're very much in my thoughts. But their families are as well. We don't think about that very much. We think about the employees. But those families are going through an emotional roller coaster too, as, as we experienced this episode. So my thoughts are with the families as well, that we'll all find the strength to stay safe, stay well and get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Couple of things about the budget. I would like to see us talk about some scenarios for what we're gonna do as June gets closer. I'm assuming the state's not going to extend the municipal budget deadline, even though maybe they should think about that. I'm not sure the implications of that. But I, I do think we need to discuss what we're gonna do. We've talked about cuts before. If we aren't able to use the TIF funds, then the cuts we've already made, we'll have to make more of them, I assume. So I think we do need to discuss that. I would just say on that note that some folks may disagree with the decision that was made, but it was made by a majority of the city council. I did talk to quite a few of my residents about it before I voted for it. I voted to delay that for over a month. And then I made the decision I felt was the best one. So right now, the city has been going forward with that decision, based on that decision. And, but we're dealing with this now. We don't know when the courts are gonna reopen. Even if they do reopen in a few weeks, I don't know what the backlog looks like, when they might get to a certain case like that as far as an appeal goes. So I do think we need to be considering and thinking about all the scenarios that we're dealing with. I do understand staff's position that you're operating under a council vote that took place that's, was challenged, but the challenge has been, you know, sorted by a judge. And so currently, there's not an appeal, so staff has to operate as the vote. That's, that's what we're going forward with. And so I do want to have a discussion about the scenarios, what we're gonna do as June gets closer. And we don't know as far as appeals go in courts. And if we're gonna be able to get TIF funds in there by June, if the state is, you know, the budget deadline is still gonna be there, all that type of stuff. So I do want to know more about that and I hope we can have those discussions over the next few weeks. So I do think it's very important. And I do hope that on May 26th, we will get more than three people to comment about the budget. A lot of people throughout the year are concerned about how the city spends money, where resources go, what priorities are. And yet every year that I've been on council, when it gets time to have these public hearings, we get two or three people that will chime in. And that's even when we have the, the hearing in the council chamber for everybody to come to. We'll get two or three people that'll come to the podium and ask some questions, some very good questions. But it's always disappointing that more people aren't more interested and don't have more questions about that or comments about where they think the resources should be spent. So hopefully at the next hearing, we'll see some more public participation. For any Ward seven residents that would like to send me questions, you can, my cell phone number is on the city website and call or text me or email me. And I will try to get answers back to you as best as I can. Second, I want to encourage residents that don't have internet or TV, but do have radio to tune into Sports Talk 1400 AM or 99.3 FM. I listen every morning. It is a Norman-based radio station. And several of our officials, including Mayor Clark and City Manager Pyle, Judd Foster, the Parks, Parks and Rec has been on there. Several community members, Scott Martin from the Chamber has been on there. Several people from the community have been going on in the mornings with Toby Roland and TJ and talking about updates on what the city's doing, about what businesses are doing, businesses that are still open, curbside, different things like that. So if you don't have internet, you don't have TV, you can definitely tune in to 1400 AM or 99.3. I also want to give out another shout out to Toby Roland this morning. He went on a pretty significant rant about seeing so many people out and about again and the numbers in Oklahoma going back up. And he was very angry and frustrated on the air this morning. And I shared that frustration. I texted him and said, as the Vice Mayor approached him, I absolutely agreed with what he was saying, that getting back out and not, not continuing to take precautions just because things got better for a second, doesn't mean it's time to let up and it could easily get a lot worse. We could be right back to that. So tune in in the mornings and check and listen to that if you want some more information and if you don't have internet and other things like that. So third, I wanted to give a shout out to a local company that makes testing kits. It's doing a lot of work, name is Emmy, founded by Norman people, based in Norman. And a few years ago, the city council approved incentive package to keep that company here in Norman. And I got to be a part of that and seeing the work they're doing, especially now, coming to answering the call, if you will. And it's something that really makes me proud to be from Norman, that we have people like that. Brothers graduated from Norman High that started this company and it's grown over the years. And what they do is, is just absolutely valuable. Anybody that doesn't know about them should get to know about that company. Third, I want to, or fourth, I want to thank City Manager Daryl Pyle for joining me on Friday. We wore masks and we stayed six feet apart, but we walked from one end of the Porter Corridor from the, to the other, from Alameda to Robinson. And we talked about the Porter Corridor Plan and the, the bond project that voters approved. And it was just real insightful since Daryl wasn't here 10 years ago when the plan was approved by city council and wasn't here, you know, last April when voters approved the bond project that that was in. So being able to walk the corridor and point out some things that I've observed over the years that I've been involved. I even found some pictures of myself at the Porter Charette Public Meeting back in 2010 or '09, I think, showing people on the board what the streetscapes are gonna look like. So it's a project I've been interested in for a very long time. And I really just appreciate Daryl taking the time out of his day to, to meet up with me and, and do that. Like I said, Dale brought the masks and we were able to stay apart. But it was, I think it was a pretty eye-opening experience for him to see kind of that street up close like that and why it's so important to us. So I appreciate Daryl continuing the great work and further reminding me why it was a great choice to hire him. So, and lastly, this, in one of the ways this is impacting me personally is this weekend, the Saturday, I was actually supposed to hit the road heading to Washington DC for the yearly DC fly-in. I flew last year and I don't dislike flying, I'm not afraid of it, but I definitely prefer road trips and driving. And last year, I got stuck in the Dallas airport for four hours because my connecting flight missed. So on the way back, so I, I was looking forward to driving out there. We were actually gonna go to New York City. It was gonna be my girlfriend's first time to visit New York City. So we're gonna go there and then drive to DC, do the business, meet with the delegates. And then we were gonna drive back and meet up with some friends in Memphis and then come back to Norman. So it was gonna be a pretty nice week long, not really a vacation, sort of a work slash vacation that we were really looking forward to. I was really looking forward to talking with our federal representatives about, you know, really important Norman issues. It was a real great experience for me last year to get to do that and tour the Capitol. We got a personal tour of the Senate floor from Senator Langford, which I disagree with a lot of policy issues with him, but it was really something special to, they don't give tours of the Senate floor to everybody. I'll just say that. You have to have a US Senator with you apparently to get to do that. So that was really cool and I was looking forward to going back and talking to them about what is important in Norman and how the federal government might be able to help us do a better job of representing. and how the federal government might be able to help us do a better job of representing our citizens here and getting resources here. So it's postponed, not canceled. So we'll see. I'm looking forward to whenever it may happen. So anyway, I just really appreciate everybody, staff, everybody that's still working, all the essential businesses. One particular essential business that is, I have to mention, there is only one Starbucks open in the entire South Metropolitan OKC area, and it's in Norman, next to NBC Suites. And I've really stopped going because the last three times I went, the line was so long in the drive-through. I just stopped going. But they, those workers there, I tell you what.
Not going to Cool Beans. That's what you get for not going to Cool Beans.
Yeah, I may well have to do that now because I just, I can't imagine being the only one open and having just a line through the entire parking lot from open to close. And so I know a lot of our healthcare workers are relying on that Starbucks coffee in the morning to get through their day and so many others. And Cool Beans, if you're on the east side. And you know, now that you reminded me, I probably will go there tomorrow because the gas station coffee is killing me. So. Anyway, thank you all and we'll see you next time.
Well, bad news, Councilor Holman. If the reschedule works for my schedule, I'll be going to DC. So, but thank you for all your comments. Councilmember Scott.
Yes, I too was going to fly out to DC this weekend. Looks like our federal representatives dodged a bullet on that one. So, anyway, I'm very proud of our community, first and foremost, very proud of our staff. Thank you, guys, for everything. This is really together, pretty amazing. Don't mind my dogs. If you can hear them barking, they're just like out being wild. They're really sick of me at this point. I don't see that people out and about because frankly, I don't go outside that much. It's dark and full of terrors out there. Y'all know about the cats in my neighborhood, but they're out there, y'all. Anyway, so I appreciate Councilmember Scanlon's comments and commitment to the homeless ad hoc committee. I was actually, when he brought, I started thinking about this. We talked about evictions and I appreciate all y'all's support on the amendment tonight that I proposed. And then I'd also wonder about if our code enforcement officers are still trying to evict or make homeless folks vacate those areas that give them 72 hours. I wouldn't see that as an essential activity. So I wonder about that and want to make sure that we're not doing that. If I can get a quick answer on that, that'd be great. And then I'll move on. We're good. So that's not happening. Okay, fabulous. Because they're also extremely at risk. Homeless folks don't always, I mean, they obviously live, you know, outside and may not have insurance or help. Sorry, Daryl, did you want to say something?
Just the recognition that shelter in place, shelter at home, and we didn't define home. Actually, even the folks at HUD shared in their guidelines that they believed it to be the safest approach to not disturb the populations and bring services to them when the call goes out that they need services. So we've been trying to follow that protocol exactly as you described.
This pleases me. Thank you so much. Okay. Because like I said, they're very, they're, they're at risk, one of our most at-risk populations as well of, of this pandemic. So I wanted to, I didn't comment, I didn't have a chance to comment earlier during our conference and I'll go ahead and send an email. But I did want to say about the August election that I was ready to support the June 30th or August election prior to the pandemic. But with so many people being out of jobs and not having income and they're struggling to eat and pay rent, it just, I need to, I'm okay, I'm comfortable moving forward with first reading at this time. But I really need to, we need to pay attention to how all this is going to go before I'm ready to ask for people for more money out of their pockets. I know it's, you know, going to be ad valorem and things like that. But you know, if that means that landlords are going to raise the cost of rent on people who already are struggling to pay it, then like we, I have to think about those things. And as far as the small business, you know, loans through the CDBG grant, I really think that we should do something more that puts the money, if we're going to be asking money from folks, we need to be putting it back into their pockets. You know, after all of this, we, we, we really need to be supporting the people, the most people as possible, in my opinion, who are struggling to just make ends meet at this time and keep shelter over their head. So shout out to our Finance Director, Anthony Francisco's son, Miles, who just received a cool award. So I just wanted to, you know, recognize that. That's really awesome. Congratulations. You guys are awesome. And so I think that I'm going to try a Ward Eight virtual meeting in May, since I'm supposed to do, or I always do the bi-monthly Ward meetings, since I canceled the last one due to the Rona. I want to see about doing some sort of virtual town hall, maybe something like this, if you guys are open to it. Again, I'll send an email and see what we can work out. So that would be great. And then also, I think we need to make some urgent action on at least having some sort of diversity coordinator. What we haven't really thought about a lot of the times in our ordinances and resolutions. And I know we're a very inclusive community. We do our best. But there are, I have heard that there are marginalized populations, people of color who are not feeling safe in our community right now. And so I really think that we need to take steps to have a diversity coordinator that helps influence our ordinances and resolutions as we go on. So I would really like some support on that from y'all. And then lastly, I guess I'll comment really quick to kind of, Councilmember Holman touched on it because we made the decision, a very unpopular decision back in November, based on the knowledge that we did have to, in the increment to the University of North Park area. I'm very confident in the decision that we made then. We, I couldn't afford seeing a pandemic and how it would affect us and our budget and the appeal process with the courts being closed. But I am very confident that we made the right decision and that with the way that our community is pulled together with as equipped as our staff is, I think that we can figure something out. Maybe we can access some FEMA funds to help supplement this shortfall. I don't know. You guys would know better than I would, I'm sure. But I'm, that's what I'm hoping since that stuff should be available to us because this is an emergency and a catastrophe that is directly affecting our budget because of the courts being closed due to coronavirus. So the last thing, aside from not being able to go to DC this weekend to have fun and harass our federal legislators a little bit, I have been enjoying isolation and quarantine personally. I know that not everybody does. Or I feel like I'm very privileged to be able to enjoy quarantine at this time. That I still have income is a blessing. But I know that some people are really having a hard time with the alone time, you know, and not being able to go out too much. So I'm trying to be more sympathetic to that. And if there's anything that I can offer to our community or to others, I would be happy to do so. Maybe send more pictures of my dogs. I don't know. They're barking right now. That's all the comments that I have tonight. So, yeah, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember. I want to share my agreement with practically everything all of you said. In terms of the census, if you recall, there is a Bedlam Census Challenge out there. And I don't care if it's in City Hall or via Zoom. I don't want to wear an orange hat to one of these things. So get it together, Norman. We are currently besting Stillwater. Pleased to report 51.3% has reported in Norman and Stillwater is at 45.6. However, with ACOG communities, we're not even in the top 10. We can do better. We are all at home. Get in front of your computers. It's the first year it's allowed online. Make it happen, Norman. Be counted. And if by any chance OU students are watching this, remember that you, that your parents can get you for your taxes, but Norman gets you for the census because you spend, in normal circumstances, the majority of your time in our community. So you get to be head of household and fill it out here. I also want to remind everyone that yes, you know, normally during the comments, we share all the fun things going on in our wards and in our city. There are still fun things going on. Our Parks and Recreation Department has been incredibly innovative with their Stay Home, Be Social initiatives. Please check it out. There's concerts Fridays and Saturday nights. There's the Teddy Bear Safari going on right now, Parks Madness. I always like to say we have over 60 city parks. Well, apparently it's 64 and it works out really well for this one event. So check it out. There, there are ways to stay connected. And as we discovered with the annual Egg and Candy Hunt, our traditions can still go on. What makes us our community, what makes us who we are, can still go on, just in a little bit of different way. So, so check that out. And I know our arts community is, is working on unique and innovative ways of delivering content as well. I want to give a shout out to coaches Barry Switzer and Lincoln Riley. If you saw the video, Coach Switzer told everyone to keep themselves at home, but in a much more Coach Switzer fashion, which I thoroughly enjoyed. And I appreciate the reminder. Sometimes it's, it's like parents, right? You can hear it from us, but when you hear it from someone else, they, they might listen. And Coach Riley, sharing photos of him masking up when he's out in public. You know, not everyone has the, the support of your, your local celebrities like this who are leading responsibly. And I really appreciate that here in Norman. In terms of all of the heroes in our community, you guys are killing it. We've got everything from Norman Community Relief to first responders, we've, we've touched on a lot of them, to people who are delivering food. But I also want to give a shout out to the bankers. I have some banker friends who have changed their entire work hours from like midnight to 6:00 AM to help process these loans. And so they're working crazy hours right now. And they are often maybe not seen as, as heroes in times of emergency. But in this one, they've really stepped up. And so, so thank you to that for, for helping everyone get through that. I also, as touching on what a lot of people said, stay home. Like I don't want to go Italian mayor on you, but I will, okay? This is not a joke. It is time to, to keep it serious. In our emergency management meeting yesterday, I asked our advisors from Norman Regional, you know, where are we at? We're doing okay now. And I said, okay, I'm getting questions. What are your thoughts on, on changing our current orders? And they practically begged me not to do that. We are not in the clear. We are not. And as we discussed earlier, April 30th is the new peak time. So hunker down, work on the Netflix list, do your spring cleaning. We'll get through this. But if we don't stay home, if we don't social distance, there will be a second spike and we will start all over. Just remember that. Okay? Remember that. Please, please stay home. And finally, on a more positive note, it's hard balancing all that we do with working full-time jobs, running businesses, having families and also serving on council. And unfortunately, this year, both of my sons' birthdays fell on Tuesday nights of council meetings. But it does give me the opportunity to wish them a very happy birthday from our council meeting. So Jordan, welcome to your teenage years, son. Our eye-rolling joke of the day has been, he is a Quarantinager. I think we should sing happy birthday to him. Oh, I'm all in for that. All right. If you'll join me. Anyone hear me? Okay, ready? And this is for all of the quarantine birthdays. Let's extend it, shall we? All right.
Happy Birthday to you.
Happy Birthday to you.
Happy Birthday, everyone.
All the people that are quarantined.
That was so painful.
But it was beautiful at the same time. All right. Thank you, all of you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.